Third Avenue. Okay, we got it. Okay. This is you appearing for ninety eight Third Avenue. You were two oh oh three three Z N K. Two oh. Two oh oh three three six Z R K. For ninety eight Third Avenue. And it's an application for a submitted by ninety eight Third Avenue Realty. Uh, for requesting a amendment to the. You know, to to, oh, I said, oh, yeah, see, again, requesting the amendment. For the zoning map, did you change the M one dash two? To an R seven B slash C two and R six B. Uh, for the zoning text amendment to appendix F designated an M I H area. Uh, for the uh, new eight story approximately twenty eight thousand square feet. Uh, twenty four dwelling mixed use uh, development. Uh, yeah, you know, uh, let's see, but also have a yes. Yes, but when you use and three three thousand five hundred square feet. Of commercials, uh, commercial space at three hundred Bergen Street. In Borm Hill neighborhood. Uh, Brooklyn, New York. Okay, um. Ninety, I guess that's, I guess we're gonna go, I guess Eric Pellic, Eric. Pellic, Pellic, sorry. Uh, I guess, are you gonna be the one who starts off?
That's okay Carlton, just call me Eric. I know that you know who I am.
Okay, Eric.
And I'm gonna, alright. I'm gonna struggle with one of my teammates' last names in a moment, so you could, you just gave me a good, a good segue to that.
Go right ahead.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Eric Palatnik. I'd like to thank the committee members. Uh, and board members, you know, we're making ourselves available this evening to be on this Zoom call with us. Uh, we're here tonight to present to your rezoning, and while I'm speaking, I'd like to ask if we can control the screen of. Austin, who's with our team, could pull up the screen, please. Austin, if you could put up, uh, the presentation. Uh, while, uh, that's coming up, this is the building, the proposal, I'll start talking about it in a minute. I'd like to introduce a few people that are on the call with us, so you know who they are. And you can feel free to ask any of them, any questions you may have. That is why they are all here. Uh, we have with us Adam Wolf, who's the owner of Bill Wolf Petroleum. They are the owner of this site, the site, for those who aren't familiar with it, and I'll show you some pictures. It's the Shell Station, the corner of Third and Butler. It's been there since the dawn of time. It's five thousand square feet. It's a tiny little lot and, uh, and Adam is the owner of that.
It's third, and it's third and Bergen.
Third and Bergen, excuse me, I misspoke, I apologize. I, I apologize. Uh, third and Bergen, you are correct. I should note after all these years, after a decade. Uh, also on the phone with us is Brian Newman. Brian is a project architect. Also on the phone with us is Anna, whose last name I will mispronounce, and uh, she created the M I H. The affordability matrices and all the numbers that we're gonna go through, that Carlton just asked about a, a moment ago. Uh, so we are all here to answer any questions you may have, and we'd be happy to, uh, to stay on the line as long as you need us to be here. We are here today to ask you to rezone the subject lot from an M one district to an R seven D C two four. Which is compatible analogous to what is nearby and adjacent to us on the other corners. And if it were to be approved by your board, we would be seeking your approval to create twenty four apartments. Eight of which would be affordable, and to Carlton's point. Seventeen of them would be one bedrooms, seven would be two bedrooms. And eight of the twenty four units would be affordable, and we can go through that in a little bit in a moment. Uh, if the project looks like it's been in front of you before, it has. For those board members who have been around for a decade or eight years or so, it has been before your board eight years already. Uh, it was at the Border Stands and Appeals, uh, for a variance request where it got caught up in a little bit of the. Former de Blasio administration, and uh, it was withdrawn from the Border Stands and Appeals, but not before you heard it. And uh, your board and your committee, this exact same building, uh, gave a committee recommendation for it in that instance. That variance was withdrawn about four years ago. We then filed this rezoning application to the exact same building. And we've introduced it to you, I think, uh, we've spoken to your committee, your board members, two or three times. As a whole, in the last few years, while it's wound its way through the application process. Uh, I'd also like to say that we've met and spoken with the Birmingham Civic Association, Howard Collins. Uh, who I just learned about, unfortunately a little late, but we did speak with him, and I believe he's on the line, he could give you his opinion. Uh, so I'll go into our presentation now, and then, uh, I'll try and go quickly, uh, as quick as I can, because I know your time is precious. Uh, next slide, please, Austin. This is the site in all of its glory. Now that I showed it to you on a picture, you probably know it very well. Uh, if you could see the, the, the top right picture, you could see the site is situated, uh, on Bergen Street. You can see just to the left, the sliver of across the street of, of a residential apartment building that's analogous in height to what we're seeking to do. That's in the R seven A right across the street, and uh, we'll show you that building and some other buildings around us. Uh, and the site is right there, the brick building to the right of us. That you're seeing there in all these shots is not us. That is owned by Yolano Corporation. The only portion of the rezoning area that is controlled and owned by us. And the only portion we're here for and focused upon, even though the rezoning is the whole block front on Third Avenue, I'll explain that in a second. Is this Shell Station, which is owned by Bill Wolf Petroleum and Adam Wolf. Uh, next slide, please. Takes you up in the air a little bit, now gives you a much clearer image of where you are. You all know the neighborhood much, much better than we do. Uh, you can see now, and you look at the site, the Yolano Brick Building I was pointing to is behind us. And they own a few properties behind us that wrap around, uh, on Bergen Street. If you focus on the area that says project area outlined in yellow, that is the rezoning area. Our site is the only portion that we control within the rezoning area, and that is labeled the site, and that is the gas station. The vacant portion of the, the rezoning area that you see, uh, that has just cars parked on it. Is owned by the City of New York, and I believe it's leased to Yolano Corporation. And the corner property, the two-story brick building that you see on the corner of Wykoff Street and Third Avenue. I believe is operated and owned by a fertility doctor. Uh, we are asking to rezone that entire block front, and I'll show you more imagery on that. From an M one zoning district, as I mentioned this earlier, to an R seven D C two four. Which is more analogous with the R seven districts that wrap around us, and I'll show you that. And obviously, this, this block sticks out like a sore thumb. Uh, next slide, please. This gives you more clear graphics for those who have not looked at any of this beforehand, for those who are looking at it for the very first time. We're showing you here an image of the proposed rezoning area on the tax map. The area outlined in red is our property. The entire area in dots is the rezoning area, and that's the area within a hundred feet of Third Avenue that will be rezoned to R seven D. You'll notice that when you go to the Wykoff Street side, at the bottom of the page, you'll see an asterisk, a red asterisk with the letters R six B. And that is calling to your attention that it made sense to correct the map there, because the zoning map. Has that one lot as a manufacturing zoning district. So when we've been working with city planning. Uh, we, we all agree that it would make good planning sense, uh, to, to correct the zoning map and have that lot. Uh, which is adjacent to an existing R six B, that exists on Wykoff. Uh, to not be left out as an M zone lot. So the decision was made to rezone that from a planning perspective to an R six B. We don't control that lot. We have no interest in that lot. It was just a planning decision, uh, that we came to when we were working on the application. Next slide, please. This gives you more context for the area. You can see the site is outlined in red here, sort of in the middle with the dotted lines around it. Uh, what we're trying to call to your attention is you could see an R seven A zoning district surrounds the site all around us. So, uh, there's a, as you extend on Third Avenue going towards downtown Brooklyn and Atlantic Avenue. That is R seven A, that includes right across Bergen Street. It also includes right across Third Avenue. All of that R seven A was created prior to the creation of mandatory inclusionary housing. So nobody there has to build any affordable housing. Uh, our ask here to an R seven D, although slightly above the R seven A. Is being asked at that, that rate because it creates an analogously sized building. And produces, uh, eight units of affordable housing as a byproduct of it as well. So that's why, uh, we're at R seven D, and hopefully you can see the logic of the request. As you look towards downtown Brooklyn, and of course, there's Wykoff Gardens that's behind us, but that's not analogous to what we're requesting here. Uh, next slide, please. This slide, again, I'm just trying to make everything abundantly clear as you're acting on a U L R P action and changing the map. This is the way the map would look in the future if you were to approve this. The left side shows you the existing zoning map. The right side shows you the proposed. The area outlined in green or highlighted in green, that's outlined with the dotted lines. Shows you the area we are asking to rezone. You could see it shows an R seven D over that. On the left side, it's M one two. So the M one two is the existing, and the R seven D is what we are proposing. Uh, next slide, please. The building itself is shown to your attention here. It's called out just as it's been called out to your board and those members who are familiar with it through the years. It has not changed at all. It is eighty six feet, it's eight stories, twenty four units, and uh, it's proposed number of affordable units. Uh, would be six at option level one and eight at option level two. I've been saying that earlier, I said. Eight, I misspoke, and option level one is at the lower affordability level. So the deeper affordability, it would create six affordable years. Next slide, please. The building here, you can see clearly here, the layout that we just said to you, and the bulk and the envelope that could be created. The right side column shows you what is proposed. It gives you all the statistics I just showed you a moment ago and explained to you. And I'm gonna skip through this quickly. Next slide, please. And I'll start speeding up as after I get through some of this, so you understand the building. The building here is shown in a section. Uh, the layout of the building is that there will be potentially some mechanical storage at the ground floor, at the cellar, if there even is a cellar. Uh, there will be a first floor where there'll be retail, and the second through the eighth floors will be residential. Go on, next slide, please. We created this slide to just give you an idea. The site is wedged in the, on the left side of the, the site. Just sort of to give you an idea of our building height in relation to other buildings on the avenues around us. You can see that our proposed height, eighty five feet, is fit squarely within the heights of the buildings. Uh, that are up and down the avenue and around us. Next slide, please. Not relying on downtown Brooklyn, which you're nothing like. Uh, this slide just simply calls out the, the needs, which you all know for affordable housing. Next slide, please, Austin. Uh, Brian, you wanna spend a couple of minutes speaking about some of the, uh, the green features that'll be included over, can you speak? Can you, are you able to hear me?
Yep, absolutely, Eric, no problem. Good evening, everyone. Um, so sustainability and, and green practices, uh, are at the core of our designs of all of our projects. Uh, this, this slide is just a, a quick highlight, quickly touches on some of the items that we'll be able to incorporate into, uh, the proposed building here. Let me just start with probably one of the most progressive now that the city is actually catching up as well. Uh, it's not quite required yet, but we'll not, we will not be providing, uh, natural gas heat to the building. It will be an all-electric, uh, building, uh, including, uh, the, uh, the cooking, uh, ranges will also be. Uh, electric. So we will be using, uh, V R F systems with energy recovery ventilators. Um, and you can see in the graphic here, it doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, that type of wall-mounted unit. Uh, in fact, with, uh, Mr. Wolf, the last few projects we have done. Uh, have all incorporated all-electric heating and cooling systems, uh, and we have eliminated the gas. Uh, system, the natural gas to basically reduce our carbon footprint. In addition to that, we, uh, we have an occupiable roof here. Uh, the elevator runs up to the top, so we will incorporate a green roof, uh, on, on the main roof. Um, we incorporate some pavers so people can walk around them and have some seating, but the balance of that will also be green roof. Uh, where we don't plant, we always investigate, uh, photovoltaics to see if it makes any sense financially. If we can put, uh, basically solar panels on those areas as well. Of course, all fixtures throughout, or light fixtures throughout the entire building will be LED. Um, that goes for not only the apartments, but obviously the common areas. In the common areas and the stairwells, those will also be, uh, motion detecting detectors. Uh, so when we're not utilizing those spaces, we reduce even further the, uh, the, uh, electrical load. Uh, from those areas. Uh, the exterior fixtures will be dark sky compliant, so yes, they will be LED. But they'll be dark sky compliant, which means there's a shield on them, and it basically stops, uh, light pollution from spreading out into the sky. Um, basically, if you look from, you know, space and looking down, we see all these hotspots. That's essentially light pollution going up into the sky. So the new fixtures, they shield them, they direct the lights down. And, and so we try to keep that, all that light onto, onto the site and not spill over into, uh. Basically, space or, or neighboring properties. Uh, of course, going into, um, windows and the building itself, high thermal val- value on the building. Uh, as far as the walls, the wind, the windows will all be thermally broken. There'll be, uh. Uh, a protruded or like a PVC type, uh, polymer window. So it's even more thermally, uh, integrated and insulated from the exterior, very high, uh. S R I, uh, excuse me, very high, uh, thermal coefficients on, on the windows as well, and same on the roof. Um, as we get into the finishes themselves inside the building, all high recycled content for all materials. Whether it's, um, finishes, uh, you know, as far as flooring or wall covering, or even in, uh, millwork situations. Um, all the painting and, uh, adhesives will be no, uh, no, a low VOC paints and adhesives. And of course, uh, all the plumbing fixtures will be low-flow plumbing fixtures, uh, meeting or exceeding. Uh, probably exceeding the actual, uh, code, uh, values, just again, reducing, uh, the use of potable water.
Brian, that was, uh, that was, we'll come back if this more. You've really been quite busy, clearly, in, in your, uh, in all of your green measures, and you're clearly up. But thank you very much for explaining all that, especially the electrification of the building, this is a new law. Uh, it, it, uh, now that we're done with the green, if we can go on now, I think the affordability comes up next in the slides. Next slide, please, Austin. This is where, uh, Carlton, this is where I share your, uh, your curse of pronouncing the second, the last name. So Anna, I guess I can never pronounce your last name. Are you available? City Five Consulting, they are M I H and affordability consulting, uh, professionals who have created the numbers. And she's gonna spend a couple of minutes going through the option one scenario to, to break down the units and the numbers and the rents. Also, I'd like to call everybody's attention that we started a, a conversation with the Fifth Avenue Committee. Who is very interested in becoming a not-for-profit administrator, uh, at this development. Uh, so we have not yet, uh, signed a deal with them, but we've started a conversation. I've spoken to Jay Marcus. And, uh, he would be interested in doing that. So, uh, I wanted to make that to your attention as well. So Anna, why don't you explain option one? Uh, at the sixty percent, and I misspoke, it's six units that are being provided. Why don't you do your thing?
Can I interrupt for one second, please? We, we'd like to have Anna's last name and the spelling of it for the record. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So that's gonna be a handful. Uh, so the first name is Anna, A N N A A, and the last name is Martynova. It's M A R T Y N O V A.
That's not very hard.
No problem. Um, so, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Anna, I work at City Five Consulting, and our office has prepared the unit mix analysis for this. Development and, uh, based on the current M I H program requirements, there are two options that we believe would, would. Uh, would be best for this development. So, um, option one. It's, uh, an option that requires the developer to allocate twenty five percent of their residential square footage to the inclusionary housing program. And, uh, under their current unit mix that we have, uh, in place, uh, that would. Uh, add up to about six affordable units. And, um, if we can go, please, to the next slide, uh, we can see. Uh, the charts that our office put together. So you can see the unit mix. Under option one, twenty five percent affordability, we will have to allocate four one-bedroom units to. Inclusionary housing and then two, two-bedroom units to inclusionary housing.
For large, sir, please, I can't really see the numbers.
Is this better?
Better, thank you.
No problem. Um, so as you can, um, M I H option one, it requires, uh, the units to have, um. Sixty percent weighted average A M I. So our office is proposing the following distribution of the A M Is among the units. We are proposing forty percent A M I for three one-bedroom units, sixty percent A M I for one one-bedroom unit. And eighty percent A M I for two two-bedroom units. In this chart, you can see, um, the rents at each A M I level for each unit size. And you can also see the household size requirements for each apartment and the requirements, um, for the income for the applicants. Um, so that pretty much sums up option one, and, uh, we can go, uh, to option two.
Well, no, there's no reason, Anna, there's no reason to go to option two, because we are, we're really only, uh, really offering option one, which is the, the deepest. Ability level. If you'd like to learn more about option two, we'd be happy to, to discuss that with everybody, uh, but I think. Option one is probably desirable by most people.
Okay, sounds good. And I just wanted to, um, point out that under inclusionary housing program. When these units will be marketed on H P S House and Connect two point O website. The, uh, community board residents will have, uh, preference for the fifty percent of the units. So for example, when we will be leasing up those units, uh, we will have to, uh, go through all of the community board applicants first to ensure they. Have the preference for fifty percent of the units in the building.
I would still like to see, uh, the eight units, please.
Oh, great.
We'd be happy. Still would like to see it, you're presenting, I'd like to see that.
Happy to show it to you.
Um.
Thank you.
We're talking about option one, right? So it's, um. Another slide.
So option two is what I want to say.
Uh, option two, okay, then, sure, here we go. So option two requires thirty percent affordability, uh, thirty percent of the residential square footage to be allocated to inclusionary housing. And, uh, under option two, uh, the allocation would be, as outlined on this slide, it would be five one-bedroom units. And three two-bedroom units. So since this option requires, uh, larger number of affordable units. It allows also to charge slightly higher rents. And, um, the average A M I should be, I believe, at about eighty percent. Um, so we, uh, proposing the, um, the following distribution. So we, uh, could do for one-bedroom units at sixty percent A M I, one one-bedroom unit at eighty percent A M I. One two-bedroom unit at sixty percent A M I and two two-bedroom units at one twenty percent A M I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the remainder of the presentation is, uh, some photographs, which we'll pause on just a couple of them. Uh, and then we'll go through the plans and explain the plans, and then we are, and that'll be the conclusion of our presentation. Uh, Austin, if you can go to the next slide, please. This slide is a good slide to show, because view five was the picture I just wanted to show to bring it down on the ground. The building that's across the street, which has no affordable housing, is in the R seven A district. Is of similar height and size and bulk attributes, uh, to what we are requesting, and I just wanted to call out. That building and the other ones on that side of the block to your attention. Uh, obviously, uh, our site is owned manufacturing, so we can't. Uh, Austin, if you go now to the plan, please. And Brian, you're gonna be up now to speak again. We have a shadow study there that we had, which we could show you if you'd like to see the shadow study. But before we talk about a shadow study, we would like to present the plans to you. Brian, do you wanna walk them through your plans again?
Sure, uh, Austin, if you could, um, maybe go to the next one. Just quickly showing the cellar here, essentially, uh, building utilities. Uh, and a bike room and some residential storage. We can go to the next one. So on the ground floor here, uh, residential entrance is on the side street, which is Bergen, which is on the right-hand side. Third Avenue is across the bottom, and you can see we've wrapped the retail across the bottom of Third Avenue, and then turned the corner as well on, onto Bergen Street. Approximately thirty-five hundred square feet of, of retail, essentially all glass in there. Uh, we're not sure exactly, maybe one, two, depends on, on, uh, on the market and, on quite honestly, what, uh, what tenants we can. We can attract to, to this particular, uh, location. Um, uh, you can see it's just relatively small residential lobby mailboxes. Uh, keeping in, in tune with, uh, active New York design. Uh, the elevator's placed just after the entrance to the stair, just trying to promote, uh, active New York, uh, healthy living style. And where, where possible, people can take the stairs as opposed to taking the elevator. Um, next one, please. So essentially, two through six are going to be, uh, very similar type of layout. Uh, the core is sort of tucked back in there, in there. Uh, you see the elevated double stairs. Um, typical, uh, refuse room with recycling, uh, corridor. Um, and essentially, we have, uh, the mix of mainly the one bedrooms, that corner unit is that two-bedroom. Uh, just takes advantage of the architecture of, of turning the corner there. Um, there's a small roof terrace in the back. Um, partially for the, uh, that one-bedroom unit. And, and the balance could be used, obviously, for some mechanical space as well as some residence, but the main. Um, main space will be on the main roof, and if we can just go to the next slide, we can actually skip the next one, because three through. Yeah, thank you. So as we get up to the seventh floor, the building steps back, uh, from both sides. Uh, you can see there's a few terraces directly for, for the units on either side. And on the seventh floor, on the right-hand side where it says roof, that's, uh, public access for the residents of the building. Um, so a nice amenity there for those residents as well, and that was one of the areas that would be incorporating some of the green roof. Uh, as well as some seating for the residents, uh, accessible directly off the main corridor. Obviously, anyone in the building can take the elevator to this floor and then walk out. Can we go to the next floor, please? Uh, eighth floor is very similar to below, uh, essentially, you just can't, you can't access those terraces. It's now, now open down below. And one more, please. And you can see the size of this main roof, uh, where it's this proposed residential eight-story roof terrace. Essentially, the elevator comes up, we'll have a vestibule there, and then this would be that main green roof. Uh, slash, you know, occupiable roof for, for the tenants, uh, and the residents in this particular building. And we, we obviously have the two means of egress coming off the, off the, um, the roof as well. The next one. We can skip these, and I think we should maybe just go to the rendering, which probably best shows it. Does it just so, uh, well, while we're here, I just quickly, I just wanna point out. That the maximum height permitted in this particular zone would be a hundred and fifteen feet. Uh, we're only providing, uh, a, or proposing just shy of eighty-six feet. So very much keeping in context with what, with what's there, without completely, uh, maxing out the overall height of the building. Um, as I said, a hundred and fifteen feet and eleven stories would be max permitted. We're at eighty-five or eighty-six and only eight stories.
Thank you, both.
And now, uh, just for the rendering, uh. As Mr. Palatnik, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, this project has been around for about eight years. Um, the general architecture or massing has not significantly changed, or basically really has not changed over all these years. But the architecture, the fenestration, the materials have further evolved. Um, as, as, uh, we've received input, uh, as materials have, uh, changed over time or developed over time. So what you see here, um, just more articulation on the facade. Uh, essentially, a mason, the, the base, excuse me, the body of the building is a masonry, uh, building, so a brick. Brick building playing with two different types of bricks there. You see more of the, the reddish-brown is sort of the, the main. Uh, the main element, and then we have these accent strips as well as the, the vertical area. That'll also be a gray tone of brick. The base will be a charcoal aluminum panel there, uh, just sort of wrapping that retail where you see that glass storefront. And then seven and eight at that top floor, it's somewhat of a wood look. And then seven and eight at that top floor, it's somewhat of a wood look, uh, very modern, very clean. It's not actual wood, so we won't have any issues with, uh, uh, maintenance over time and durability. It's more of a porcelain material that's made, uh, for rain screen. Um, you can see the, the windows are charcoal gray aluminum in that loft style. It sort of lends itself to the, um, i- industrial, modern slash new residential feel of the area. And you can see on the far right bottom, uh, that's Bergen, the right-hand side, you s- begin to see a canopy for the residential entrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And that concludes our presentation. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions if any has. Bring the screen back up to any screen envy would like. We thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Eric. Okay, we will, our questions will work actually now, it's, we'll do them after the formal closing of the hearing. Uh, right now, this section is going to be for the public to comment. Uh, I think we should start off with Howard Collins, uh, since he is the main, you know, the head of the Boreham Hill Association and the main, uh, person from the community, uh, I think, Sir Collins, are you there?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Do you hear me?
Barely, it can get a little better.
Okay, so, uh, I thank you for the time. We, uh, did speak with the developer. And we did see this proposal earlier, and the, the board was generally enthusiastic. I want to go back just a, a decade ago, a little more than a decade ago, that Boreham Hill was, uh, we put in a zoning proposal in about twenty-ten that was approved by the city. And at that time, just to give context, we did actually increase some of the zoning on Third Avenue to R seven A. This particular block, M one, M two, was really not part of the discussion because, uh, we asked city planning if they had an idea of where this was headed, and at that time, uh, they didn't want us to change the designation. If we had the opportunity, we would have at least zoned this for R seven A. So this, this R seven D proposal is in keeping. Uh, we were concerned about that designation and its heightened bulk. But this proposal, uh, very nicely addresses that by staying at the eighty-six feet, uh, by echoing the street across, the building across the street, by having ground floor retail, which wasn't required back then a decade ago. So we're grateful for that. We think Third Avenue can use a little more, uh, activity. Uh, there are some businesses there now nearby, so it'd be nice to have some more. And we did, I did encourage, uh, there to be two rather than one, but I, I leave that to them based on what they can, thirty-five hundred square is, thirty-five hundred square feet is not exactly a huge storefront. But, uh, small town retail is also always welcome. Uh, the only thing that the board brought up as, um, for me to mention to you was, it will be a proposal that we've seen for the middle of the block. We don't think in R seventy is appropriate there, so we, uh, we do agree with this proposal. We think it will be nice, a nice addition. But we do want to mention that the two-eighty Bergen comes up sometime. We expect to see it later. And we think we'll need a further discussion about what that is. But again, in our sense of the individual blocks, higher on Third Avenue, moving down to lower residential, and the next block in Nevins is not only R six B, but is part of the new expanded historic district. So, um, thank you for your time. Uh, we appreciate the work that uh, this has gone into this development and this proposal, and, uh, we can, we can, and we can support it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Um, I'll just ask, uh, Carolina and Taya, do we have any other people who wish to testify, uh, at this hearing for ninety-eight Third Avenue?
Uh, Jay Siegel.
Hi. My name is Jay Siegel. I'm a land use attorney with Greenberg Trower, and I represent Yolano Corporation that Eric referred to and that Howard just referred to. Uh, with respect to our property, Austin, can you put up the tax map so I could make it clear to, uh, people what property Yolano owns? Thanks. Uh, Yolano owns lot nineteen, um, and which do you see the M one-two designation is in the middle of? That lot is mostly on Bergen, as Eric explained. About fifty feet of it are within the area that Eric is looking to rezone adjacent to Third Avenue. And some of it also extends to White Cor Street. Um, we have been working, as Howard said, with city planning and submitting draft applications that would rezone the entire block, uh, except for the portion already zoned R six B, we would not touch. Um, we would be asking for exactly what Eric is asking for, for the part of the block within a hundred feet of Third. Uh, and so we are in total support of Eric's application. Uh, we would be asking that the rest of the block, not currently zoned R six B, be rezoned to, um, R seven A. And we hope that application will be certified in the next few months. Um, and we hope to be back before the board, uh, in May, if that's possible, and we present all the details uh, to you at that point. We have talked to Howard once and, and the Boreham Hill Association, and we would certainly talk with them again um, to hear what issues they may have. That's all I have to say. I hope to be back here soon. Thank you very much. Okay, are there any others? Anybody else who wishes to testify regarding to ninety-eight Third Avenue, or do we have any others? Carol, Taya, Carolyn? Uh, wait a moment.
No, I haven't seen anyone else. No one has messaged this host.
Sir Gordon, there was a
Hi, I did message the host that I would like to speak, and he said, got it, but I haven't been called.
Thank you, Ms. Philo. Mr. Gordon McKenzie Philo would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, hi, my name is McKenzie Philo, and I live in downtown Brooklyn, and I support the rezoning. A residential designation makes, makes more sense for this area, which is mostly residential and not manufacturing. The proposed building will fit in perfectly with the rest of the neighborhood. And we desperately need more housing in this city, so anything that will facilitate the building of apartments is a good thing. We have a housing crisis, and every neighborhood needs to build more apartments. Apartments are far preferable to a gas station, which is what is there now. The committee should vote to recommend approval of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philo. Do we have any other, um, people wish to testify?
There's truly it. Unless some, unless someone else indicates they'd like to speak now, there's no one else on the list.
Thanks, Caroline. So, okay, just, and let's explain to my fellow, uh, committee members and board members. The questions and comments will occur after I hit the gavel, so to speak, uh, and close this hearing. So if there are no other uh, people who wish to testify or speak, I am going to close the hearing at six forty-five P M. We're gonna close the hearing for, uh, ninety-eight Third Avenue. And now we will slide over to our regular board, you know, or committee here. Uh, meeting for the Landmark Land Use Committee of Community Board to, uh, at this, on this date. Thank you for coming. Uh, uh, and we have, I again thank Dorj, Dorj Kostoffin, who's our co-chair and is actually doing the minutes for this one, and thank you very much again, Dorj. Also, Irene Janner is also, is also our co-chair, and Karen Johnson is our secretary of Kate, you know, when she can do so. I thank Karen for her work. Uh, we run through the people who are here. I think we've taken a list of that, and I thank you for, for being here, and thank you for coming. Uh, just so that's for, first, if there are no objections, uh, to the approval of the agenda. Um, again, I've stated that, what is it, two ninety-four, uh, uh, Claremont is off the, will be postponed. Other than that, uh, if there are no objections, I'd like to adopt the agenda. Thank you very much. Uh, next will be the minutes, uh, from the, from December sixteen. Uh, I thank Karen for doing the last minutes, uh, for, uh, minutes for, uh, December sixteen. Um, I know some people have had some trouble finding it, but it, it's there. If not, I think Karen Johnson can maybe email you a copy from what she has in Harris, and I think it should, but it should be, uh, with the, uh, board office as well. Uh, so if there are no objections, I'd like to have the minutes adopted. Okay, thank you very much. Minutes are so adopted. Uh, now, we'll go through the, you, okay, you are, now, I just want to let people know, uh, that we'll do this, and then what we'll be doing at, after the U L A, uh, discussion and vote is we'll ask for any comments from people on the rest of the agenda. So I know it's a little confusing, but this is what we're going through. So right now, we're doing the, uh, U L A discussion. I guess we'll actually start with a motion to approve.
Uh, Carlton, I, we have, we have questions, Carlton, to ask first before
You have questions you want to do?
Yeah, we have, there are three people with hands up that want to ask questions of the presentation.
I don't understand how these, this meeting is being organized. How is it? It, it's, it's not, I don't, I don't understand this organization. How could we have a presentation? And then other discussion before the committee members get a chance to talk with the applicant? How is this working?
We mean, the people will still have a chance to, uh, all the applicants are still there, you'll have a chance to do it. Uh, this is what I've been instructed. This is not my, um, it's not what I would, it's not my invention. This is not what I've been, uh, I would not have come up with this. We've been doing it properly for a long time, but I understand this is part of the controllers. Um, I would say their request that we do it this way. So we will, and I think everybody, all the applicants are still here because we still have to vote on it. And they want to hear what we have to say, and we will have that. Actually, I'm going to start with one question to the, any of the applicants. Uh, my first question will be for the app, my one question for the applicants. Uh, you have the B sixty-five bus stop comes through there, B sixty-five bus comes through there on Bergen Street. Is the bus stop at that part going to be affected or be relocated? Do any of you know that? Because that's the Bergen Street, Dean Street bus, the bus stop bus, and it's coming across. Yes, go ahead.
Eric Platnik, no, there'll be no reason to relocate any bus stop, the bus stop, because there's no vehicular entrance anywhere on our site. So there's no curb cut, so we're not, we're not interrupting the street in any way, shape, or form.
All right, thank you very much. It's good to hear. All right, now we'll take the questions that I see from in order of, I, I see on my screen, uh, the first one I see is Judy Stanton, so the Stanton, what is your, uh, question or comment?
I have two questions. The first one is, when you say the controller, you're following a format that was dictated by controller, which control, are you referring to Brad Lander, the new newly elected New York City Controller? Are you referring to Carlton?
Uh, this again is coming from the office of the controller.
Which control?
Again, this comes from, uh, my discussions, yes, this comes from, uh, again, I've been informed by Carolyn Church that this is the, uh, new format that's been coming, that's requested by, or say requested. Uh, it's pretty much almost a demand from the controller's office. This is what I've been informed by.
I think it's very strange, uh, Caroline, I'm, I'd like to have you explain that perhaps another time. I think it's weird. It's not his place. It's, it's bizarre.
Matt, Matt, Matt.
My other question was
Carolyn's willing to answer your question. Go ahead, Karen.
Great. Okay, so what we just had was a public hearing on the U L A application. The rules state that a public hearing is for members of the public only. So during the hearing portion, only the public should be asking questions. The committee gets to ask their questions in this portion of the meeting. So the meeting has to be called to order, which Mr. Gordon did, before the committee can begin asking questions on the matter in the public hearing. Um, if we add to follow the controller's recommendations completely, we would have all members of the public speak before we even begin to hear the applications. That is the format that they, I don't want to say mandated, but I don't want to say recommended either, but that, that is what they would have us follow. It does not currently work, um, the way that we host our meetings, because generally, we've been having applicants for the certificate of appropriateness applications. Present, committee asks questions, and then the members of the public ask questions. The controller does not consider that a public hearing. But we've, we've, we've just held a public hearing. Um, on the U L A application, the public has asked their questions, and now the committee can begin to discuss and ask questions of the applicant.
All right, my question about the project.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I just want to have
You have your other question?
Yeah, what's the total number of units, of which I know eight are affordable? What's the total number?
I can say that twenty-four.
It's Eric Platnik, it's twenty-four units, and under option one, six are affordable.
Oh, six, I thought it was eight.
Yeah, uh, eight is under option two, but option one is deeper affordability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If, okay, if nothing else, then I'll go on to Bill Flannoy is the next one on my, uh, screen.
Thank you, Carlton. I got a couple of questions here, Carlton, so it might be a second or two. Okay, um, yeah, you're saying to us that are eight are affordable, but under option one, only six are affordable. So if you're asking for eight affordable housing units, okay, where are the other two housing units there as, as far as affordability?
Okay, so I may, I might have made it a little confusing. There are two different scenarios that could come out of the affordability, the mandatory inclusionary housing. One is option two. That's a higher rent level, and it requires a higher percentage of the units being affordable. That's, that's an option that's available to the councilman and your board to, to act on. That creates eight of the units becoming affordable of the twenty-four. That's where I probably confused everybody, because the option that we're really promulgating is option one, which is the deeper level of affordability. It, it lowers the rents. That carries with it a, a lower percentage of affordable square footage, and that creates six affordable units. So the selection between the two choices of affordability is where the difference in the unit counts are. So there's eight potential affordable if you went with option two, and there's six potential affordable if you went with option one. Option one makes the rents lower, that's what Anna was speaking to, and option two makes the rents still lower than market rate, but slightly higher than option one does.
Okay, so you're only asking for six.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I just want to clarify, excuse me, uh, Bill, and you were asking as part of tonight's hearing that you, uh, we approve option one.
Uh, yes, um, we are, we are not even, uh, suggesting option two, because most community boards, as well as now the governor, has now issued, uh, a, a, a statement today that the four-twenty-one program will now even ask at sixty percent. So, uh, a lot of the city has been asking the developers to come in at the lower income band. So I figured, I don't want to waste your time at, at, at option two, because that's where most people are asking, but we'd be happy to, happy to do it in either income band that you see fit.
I just want to be clear what we're trying to approve, because the idea was we were looking at eight. Okay, so that's what I'll make sure of. Now, of those units, are any accessible for, uh, uh, disabilities?
Yes, uh, Brian Newman, can you speak to the handicapped accessibility, uh, component of your design?
Uh, absolutely. So the, the entire building is designed to, uh, handicap adaptable standards, so therefore, all clearances, um, So therefore, all clearances, um, uh, all door whistle, all room sizes, things of that nature. Um, even uh blocking within the walls uh for like grab, for grab bars are all provided now. Um, if someone needs those accommodations, essentially, uh, it can be changed at a future date without significant modifications to the building. For instance, uh, the uh cabinet below the sink could be removed uh fairly easy, ea- easily. And uh then we just simply put the uh, the insulated uh padding on the trap underneath the, the sink there, so you don't bang your knee or scold your leg. Um, so a hundred percent uh uh, 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 adaptable design.
To add a little bit on that topic, uh, when we will be leasing out those affordable units, there will be a certain uh set aside of the units for applicants with mobility impairment and with visual and hearing impairment. There's going to be two units set aside for applicants with mobility impairment, and one unit set aside for applicants with vision and hearing impairment.
Those will be the affordable units or units in general?
Uh, the affordable ones.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, I have another question too. Um, as far as remediation is concerned, have you done any testing for remediation, since this is uh, a previous uh, you know, gas, gas, gas station, yes.
Thanks for bringing that up. I was remiss in not mentioning that earlier. The site does have identified spills on it. It has been a gas station, as you you know, we're just mentioning for the better part of eighty years or so, and especially back in the earlier part of the twentieth century, the gas tanks were steel, and they leaked. Now they're double lined and they're, they're fiberglass and so forth. So there is a leak, we know about it, it's been reported. Uh, it's not a major leak, it's, uh, we don't believe it's traveled far. Uh, it's, it's not uh substantial. Uh, but we are registered with D E C, we're in the Brownfields program, there's a spill number. We will be required to, of course, clean it up uh to the satisfaction of the state D E C, and we will not be able to get a building permit until they sign off on it, as well as D E P. Uh, so that's a good point, and thank you for bringing that up, but it will be addressed.
Yeah, I noticed when I was looking at the uh report that that wasn't even mentioned, so I was wondering if there was actually drilling done.
Yeah, there, there was no actual uh drilling done necessarily, there are a couple of borings that were done. It, it really, the site needs to be ripped apart to get added uh due to the location of where the tanks and the, everything is, so uh, the, it will be, of course, taken out in its entirety. You're welcome.
Thank you. And the setbacks, where the setbacks are and what are the setbacks?
Brian, you're back in business. Do you want us to pull the plans up and show you that in a plan format?
Yeah, they, they, yes, that would be helpful, because the uh, the cross section is there.
Austin, can you pull up the plan, get to a section or an elevation, please?
Actually, I have it on this, okay, there you go. So a, at the seventh floor, you can see it steps back on, on either side. Uh, about fifteen feet on the right-hand side from Bergen, I think it's maybe ten uh, on the left-hand side, I'm going by memory on the left-hand side there.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure that those, those setbacks were fifteen and ten. Okay, uh, and to sort of curiosity also, this is probably my last question. Okay, unless someone else has other questions. Uh, what uh commercial spaces, industrial spaces are you replacing? And what do you expect to actually put in its place for commercial?
Okay, so we're not replacing, the site is a gas station now, so that's what we're replacing, that's all we're replacing. Uh, and what we hope to put in there is neighborhood retail, maybe some kind of coffee shop or or barber shop or uh a hairstylist or florist or local retail is what we're seeking uh for the ground floor. Uh, but we're not displacing any business other than uh Adam Wolf, who is the developer's gas station. And uh, the gas station is not pumping that much gas these days. It's a very small, uh, tiny gas station, and it doesn't attract a lot of business.
Okay, no problem. So I, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the entire project, I guess, because for some reason I understood it, low-rise commercial space, light industrial properties and uh, some surface-level parking lots are being displaced.
Uh, I think what you're speaking to, Austin, if you can go to the aerial that shows the entire block front, I, what you're speaking to probably, if I'm, I'm, I'm understanding you correctly, is that area in yellow that's shown on the picture right now in front of you. Uh, so the area in yellow is the rezoning area, the site is just our property with the gas station. And what I was calling out at the earlier part is that entire area in yellow on the block front is what is being rezoned to R seven D. The re, everything that's not within the rectangle that says site is not under our control. So I was calling out that the remaining property, the parking lot, I believe, or I know, I shouldn't say believe, is owned by D Cast and leased to Yolano Corporation. And that was J C, who he just heard speak a moment ago, gentleman behind us. And the building on the other corner that's on Wycoff, the two-story brick building, I believe is owned and operated by a fertility doctor who has his office there. So that's what I was referring to earlier.
Yeah, that's another project altogether. Okay, thank you very much, Eric, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for your questions.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, the next person I see on my screen is Ms. Lee.
Yes, uh, my question is, are you, would you be applying for the four twenty-one E?
We're hoping everybody in the city and is hoping the four twenty-one is going to be renewed, the government, yes, we would be, the government, it's, it's due to expire in June. Hasn't been renewed yet, but if it is renewed, yes, we would be applying for it.
Okay, and if you got the um, the rezoning, you said that, that that would allow eleven stories, but you were maintaining it eight. Is there a reason you were losing that much F A R and not going after it? Because you could have gotten more units out to the building if you went to maximum.
No, we, just to clarify, we, we are maxing the F A R, we're not maxing the height.
Ah, okay, understood.
So, yeah, we, we didn't leave it on the table, um, but we were able to design it in such a way that we can maximize it without going too vertical.
Going all the way, okay, I just, you could take down the, the screen.
Right, thank you. Austin, pull that down. Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Next person I see on my screen is John Do. We need you, we're not hearing you, um, can you?
Mr. Gordon, let me be, thank you, let me be clear. As a board member of community board two, I don't expect to come to a meeting and find out about new rules that I should have known about in advance. All of the board members should have been informed on, in advance of the changes that are being implemented, not at the same time that everybody else is. We have questions as board members about our responsibility. So it is appropriate to communicate with the board members in advance of making changes. I would have immediately suggested that we rewrite to the uh controller's office and explain how we are currently doing business, which incorporates all the, all the comments from the community, what I think is actually at the appropriate time, after we have asked questions, so that there is a clearer understanding of the proposal by the time we get to the question, period.
John, this was actually emailed to the entire board.
Say what?
This was emailed to the entire board, John.
Uh, it was not discussed with the board, and we have not reacted to it. Bill, we have to react, we have to be proactive. This does not work as the best way for the community to have input. Are we going to recycle the community input after we finish talking, so that folks can now ask additional questions? How long is this going to take? We need to make sure that the community knows as much as possible. And that is after the board members who have some background with this have asked the questions. And the community can listen to the board members discuss before they discuss.
Mr. Do, I'm going to jump in here as vice chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rank, I'm gonna pool rank. We should not be taking up people's time talking about what we're supposed to know already. Yes, there's an opportunity to learn more about how we can run our meetings better, but I would posit that this is not the place to do it, and I would propose that we move on with committee discussion about the U L um at hand. Thank you.
I don't disagree with that, Daughtry, but I'm pretty perturbed that we're having to have this discussion at the same time.
You're the only one having it, Mr. Do, I'm sorry to say. Everybody else seems aware that we're trying to get through the new regulations.
Excuse me. I'm asking the applicant, do you have any examples of buildings that are in place that have employed all of the new technology that you're proposing for this building that you could share with the community board? That's one thing, uh, because I think what you're doing is very exciting. It is exactly the direction that we ought to be heading in, and so we'd like to understand more about how this is working. Is there any project out there that has completed that would be able to share their results with the community board?
Yeah, we can compile a list uh and, and provide it. I would say, I don't know if I have one building that has every single one of these things all put together in one, but certainly um, green roofs have, and we've installed in a number of buildings, the V R S systems have been installed. Uh, we have three other projects that they're being installed as we speak right now under construction. Uh, the low-flow plumbing fixtures have been installed for years. Um, so the, to simply uh answer your question, yes, we can provide a list that can uh show you where these other uh items are, are installed. Um, we have successfully uh built uh, uh, LEED certified uh, uh, multifamily residential projects as well, uh, that incorporate uh these techniques as, as well. So we can send some photos and, and a list for your reference.
Thank you for that, and my final comment was going to be uh, the same as what Ms. Ali presented. I was going to ask uh, if you could build an additional two stories of purely affordable housing. But I understand that uh you are within uh the maximum of the guidelines, so I'm gonna not ask you that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, next person I see on my screen is Karen Johnson.
Hi, my question is, I think I understand your proposal, and I understand your building. But we're also being asked to rezone an entire area that is outside of your control. So say that the two-story building on the corner, can we expect a similar building as yours to be built on that? And the city parking lot, the same thing, so are we really agreeing to upzoning that entire area? Even when you show renderings, you show little buildings and nice little trees, we're really agreeing to a, a bigger density in that whole block, right?
Yes, you are facilitating the rezoning of the block. Uh, J Segal was there a moment ago, and he's already explained to you what he expressed plans to do, and that includes those lots on Third Avenue, I believe, that you're referring to. Uh, so yes, it does facilitate that. I could also suggest that it was within the councilman's powers, he's reviewing it and acting on it uh, to trim and give the rezoning district a haircut if he should desire. Uh, he could cut it down in size to a size or make a request of the city council that they do that. Uh, so there is a way to address that from, not from necessarily your perspective, but from uh the process.
Why did you request the whole block? Is that just the way the rezoning works?
Yeah, the rezoning is a systemic, uh, it's meant to be a comprehensive land use plan that makes sense on a planning basis. So if you looked at the maps when we were presenting, I was trying to call out the continue, that we were extending the continuation of the adjacent districts, and that was for a reason, because uh, I was trying to call out that we just weren't doing a spot zoning on our piece, but rather extending it. But again, that's, I have to do that, I have to make that request. It is fully within the council's power to reduce it and trim it as they see fit.
All done, sorry, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you very much, Karen. Uh, the next person I see listed, uh, next member I see is Esther Blanc, Esther.
Yes, um, so I know option one, the A M, A M I starts at forty percent, and I believe it's three units at forty percent A, A M I. And the highs it goes up to with the six units is eighty percent A M I. But if we, um, the eight units, the A M I stock starts at sixty percent, and it goes up to a hundred and twenty percent, that's what I got from your chart.
Right.
My question is, if um, community board two approves this, there's no guarantee that we really approve an option one, which has the lesser A M I. When it's approved, you can, you can use option two, am I correct?
No, you could limit it to council, and, and you can limit it and, and request it to be approved with, just with option one and option two not being option.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks for your question, it was a very intelligent question, I appreciate it.
Are there any other board members, committee members who have any uh points to questions to make? Oh, by the way, I should just point out, I want to keep going back and forth on this matter with the controller. Uh, Chairman Larry Singletary, our chair, uh, had discussed this at uh, previous meetings in the uh, both the general and at the executive committee. Uh, so this is, these are things that, that we're really taking part, part of the direction is coming from our own chair. So I just want to make that clear. Okay, uh, if there are no other uh board members or committee members who have questions on ninety-eight Third Avenue, I'd like to get a motion to approve.
Motion, Hazra.
You moved to approve, do we have a second?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a motion to approve as presented with option one.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, second, John Do.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Daughtry.
I do share Karen's concern regarding, um, you know, this, our hearing right now is in effect a spot zoning request, because they can only present what they are promising to do, which I personally think is adequate and great, and there's a lot of things to really like about it. I would call out that they are leaving not F A R, but building height on the table, and I know sometimes our neighbors and our, you know, buildings, particularly as you go down Third Avenue away from downtown. Um, additional height, I mean, you're at eighty-six, we can go up to a hundred and fifteen, that's almost thirty additional feet. Could be built at the other parts of the block. So I do want to at least spend a second to think about how we might guide um, the application and its approval to mitigate anxiety that might come from a taller building south of this location.
Um, Daughtry, can I just say something? I know I just asked Eric Palatnik the same question. What he was saying is they use all the F A R, and therefore they have a wider bulky building. If you're gonna go high, are you gonna have to make a skinny building?
I know, so I think Hazra, that I think the concern, I, I understand all of this very well, this is what I do. So I think that the concern might be where the reference was pointed to R seven A, which is a, is a smaller ask, right? It's less bulk. The applicant is asking for R seven D for the entire block, which means that someone else could build an R seven D building much taller, south of this location. So that's my only concern, is that I think we should recognize that that is a potential if we approve the rezoning without any conditions.
So do you want to make a friendly amendment?
That's what I was about to ask.
Um, well, it's hard, because the building that's being presented is really in essence, it's an R seven D building, but it's acting like an R seven A. Right? It's not so tall, it's thirty feet shorter than it, it's allowed to be. And it's nicely laid out, and we are all, I think, fairly positive in our reaction to the type of building, the distribution, et cetera. I just don't know how to control the future when this U L is not about that lot. It's not about the other lot. Bill, help me out here.
Yeah, what we're looking at right now is literally a spot zone for just that one lot. If we do the entire, what he's asking for, what will happen basically is this. The next developer can build whatever he wants without ever consulting us, if we already approved his zoning. Okay, so.
Yeah, but it's not shared to say whatever he wants, it can only be up to eleven stories.
Yeah, but the thing is though, right now he's restricted. Whoever developer is right now, because we, we not gonna, if we resort it now. Whoever developer is right now, because we we not gonna, if we resound it now, they're not restricted. Okay, so we have to do a spot zone, so whoever does the development on the other lots has to come to the committee to tell us what they wish to do. If we do the zoning now, they don't have to do that.
My suggestion, uh, Daughtry, perhaps, is if we approve the motion, but we also express as part of the motion our concern over the future. So at least we're on record that we are concerned about the future zoning at that location. Uh, perhaps we, we can make that as a friendly amendment.
Carlton, once we make that amendment, it doesn't matter. Once they have the zoning, they don't have to come back.
But wasn't there only two properties still?
Yeah, I mean.
One was the parking lot and one was Dr. Coffina's fertility clinic. So it's only two properties, it's not like there's twenty-five more open lots to be built.
Exactly, I think we, my, my position be we approve the motion and on the, our records, you know, and something that we're good, because this is gonna go before the full board. And I can mention at the full board that yes, we approve this, but we have this concern and we put it before the full board at, so at least it'll be on record that we still have this concern, but with approval of the uh application.
I just want to point out per Zola that there are five additional lots beyond Lot Thirty-One. That would be affected by the rezoning, not including the R six A, which is going to be corrected. I believe that's Lot Forty-One, so just so everybody knows, it's not just.
No, you're saying lots, but it's two parcels of properties.
But they are, they are individual lots. They may have the same owner, but there are five lots going down Third Avenue that would be upzoned.
Which is like a hundred feet of property in the parking lot and probably forty for the fertility clinic.
Probably, yeah.
Which is another perhaps eleven story, because the gas station is fifty feet.
Right.
I, I don't think this, uh, for two open spot of a hundred feet, we're not gonna get eleven-story building or forty-story building. They could never go beyond eleven, and I don't think eleven is such a bulky building for that area. Because now that the go-onus has been upzoned, there'll be a lot of applications for that area.
There are a lot of issues. Karen Johnson just mentioned also air rights.
Does, does the, the applicant want to say something on this matter? Could we hear from him?
Eric, do you have any other comments you want to make on this?
Yeah, we're still here.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, you know, I just make the original comment that I made a few moments ago, which is simply that you are entitled to work with the councilman to cut the lots out if there's something you wanted to do. We have to include the lots as a part of the rezoning. We cannot cut them. Uh, the height limit that the, the hundred and fifteen feet, Brian did use all the floor area. So it could be expected that most developers would encounter the same issue and would probably cap out around the same height. Uh, the lots in the middle are de-cast zone, so nobody could just develop on them without those lots being first transferred. Uh, so you have some control over those lots, they're owned by the city. So, and the fertility doctor, I don't know if he has plans to develop it or not. So I, I, I would submit that it's, it's within your ability to change it if you wanted to.
Well, I'll tell you, the fertility doctor just recently built that center. He moved out of Methodist Hospital and just recently built, so I don't see him developing it as land. What happened?
We, I think what we, we reached out to the fertility doctor a number of times. We haven't heard back from him.
Right, well, he just moved out of uh uh as um Methodist and opened his own center, so I don't believe he would be building in a hurry.
So I just wanna.
I'm gonna say that he bit, he, I'm gonna say he's busy reproducing. I can't, I couldn't hold that one.
Or making, or helping others to reproduce.
All right, okay, so we have a motion on the to approve as presented with option one from Hazra. We have a second from John. I was asked if I wanted to make a friendly amendment, and I don't think I do. Because I think that um, the bulk, the bulk should be oriented along Third Avenue, so I'm, that's all.
Okay, so then, it's up to you.
Okay, no, I think we discussed this point. I will, and I will bring it up, I guess, well, first, let's get, let's get the, oh. Um, let's get you, since we have a second and we have, we've discussed this, uh, let's start the uh, little call. All right, uh, I guess, who wants?
Carol Anne.
Okay, so I'll do, should I do it or should, do you want somebody else to do it?
I'll do it, because it's a little easier, I think, that way. Uh, Hazra Ali?
Yes.
Esther Blunt?
No.
Ottrick Kristoffen?
Yes.
John Do?
Yes.
Alton Gordon?
Yes.
Brian Howell?
Yes.
Karen Johnson?
abstain.
Of Illinois?
Hey.
Irene Jenner?
Yes.
Trudy Stanton?
Yes, but I think we should express a strong wish to the council member, uh, Lincoln Wrestler, uh, that we don't want to see a higher building. We're approving it because we think this is a desirable project, but we're concerned about the rest of the block. I think that should be expressed by the board.
Is that part, the, the, an addition to the motion?
I think it could be a condition, not part of the motion, but a condition.
Uh, okay, a statement, just checking.
Yeah, we can't, we can't change the motion in the middle of voting.
Exactly.
But that's what I was gonna say, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Um, and just to be sure, Ernest Augustus, are you on?
Not here.
Elizabeth Ginsburg?
Not here.
Alan Washington? Okay, motion carries, seven, one, two.
Uh, does, uh, is that, is this part of Lincoln's? I don't know if anybody knows, this is certainly, I know the cutoff is kind of weird at that location. Uh, says, is this inside, still inside uh Lincoln's district or is it in the other district?
It's Lincoln's district, Lincoln, Lincoln, Lincoln.
It's in Lincoln's district, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, so the motion passed, uh, thank you very much, uh, Ninety-Eight Third Avenue people. And uh, you can stay if you wish, uh, and moving on now for the landmark preservation commissions. At this time, I will open up, first we'll go to community, uh, if there's any community, um, let's say questions or comments that want to be made on the items that are on the, on the LPC items. And the other items we have coming up, uh, we have three even coming up, Two Fifty Cumberland Street, One Sidney Place, and One Seventy-Five Clinton Street. Are there any comments from community, community people who wish to comment on any of those items? Now, I'm especially pushing, not pushing, but I'm certainly bringing this point up because we, uh, understand, Carol Anne, that you have letters from, what is it? One of the Fort Green groups that it that indicated opposition, so I just wanted to make sure that that point was made for the record.
Mr. Gordon, I'm a part of one of the groups that's sending letters, there's three letters that were sent in. And they are not in opposition of two, are we talking about Two Fifty Cumberland? They just wanted to be, wait, wait, let me just, this is. They said that it should be approved, but let me find the wording. The, um.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want.
So you want to go and then I'll talk later?
Let me open, let me open up Two Fifty Cumberland, let me open it up and I'll give you the, uh, I'll give you the chance, so let me open up Two Fifty Cumberland Street in Fort Green. Uh, basically, they're look, they're concerned, they're looking to re- restore stoop and uh portico. That's, so we now are opened up for Two Fifty Cumberland. Uh, go ahead, uh, Esther, what, what the group, which, and tell us which group, just so we have it for the record.
This is all, this is the Fort Green Association, is CRNP, and is um, the Society of Clinton Hill. They just want that the cast iron gate posts framing on the right side, I believe, matches the one on the left side. In other words, that wasn't inco- included in the, um, in the proposal. And I think they had a meeting with one of the, um, 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 one of these organizations. And they recommend that they, um, hold on, I'm sorry. That, that they restore the front fence to reflect the historical appropriate design by the addition of a second matching ornament cast iron post on the left side of the entrance gate. So as far as I understand it, there is a post on the right side. They just want them to add that they also will match it up on the left side. That's it, they not, they did not disapprove or send in a negative, they just want to add that, that point.
Appreciate it, Esther, okay. Uh, so a little out of order and when, and when we do that, but okay, that's fine. All right, so now we'll go to the uh applicant, um, and you may want to bear in mind what, uh, the comments given by Ms. Blunt, uh, applicant for Two Fifty Cumberland Street. Please go ahead and give us your name and affiliation.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jacoby, um, and I'm the architect at Two Fifty Cumberland Street. Thank you all for taking the time. Um, can I share my screen and get started?
Go ahead.
All right. Great.
Do we need Ted? Do we need your helper there? Okay.
No, I think we're good. Um, let me just make this. So I can, of course, my computer will slow down. Oh, great. It's sent to Zoom. Are you all seeing my screen?
I see Two Fifty.
Everyone's seeing my screen?
New York, I can, I see that part, just in plain white and your name at the bottom.
All right, I think I'm frozen here, of course, just in perfect timing. Can you hear me, even though I'm frozen?
Yes, we hear you and we can see the screen.
Great, so I'm just gonna move ahead. So we're looking at the block of Cumberland between DeKalb and Lafayette, and this is a close-up of the house itself. It was built in eighteen fifty-two as a twin with the building adjacent to it. You can see our building, um, Two Fifty-two is circled in red here. Um, so the block.
All I still see is just, hold on, I just see the, uh, the first, I guess, your first page.
Okay, I'll wait for it to catch up. We're just having some technical difficulties as usual. I'm gonna hide my video, any.
Might I suggest you turning off your video?
Sure. Let me see if I can, oh, I think it's turned itself off, maybe. Okay, is it better, slower, anything?
No, just the first, I guess, first page, I guess.
Mr. Kobe, could you try, Mr. Kobe, could you please try, um, closing and starting the share over again? Yep. Anything? It's loading, it's loading.
Loading, yeah.
Says, you know, we're in blacks, shared screen, we scratched. Started screen sharing, that's all.
Okay, let's try one more time, Mr. Kobe. I think we may have lost Mr. Kobe. Oh, no, there she is. Okay, we are currently on page two.
Okay, Karen, you hear us?
I can hear you. Yes, yes, okay, I'm gonna move slowly, okay. Um, okay, so here we are, Two Fifty-two Cumberland, we're all on the same page, we can see it.
Yeah, we see the, um, picture and the little map.
Incredible, all right, so we're in Cumberland between Lafayette and DeKalb, I'm gonna go quick before I crash again. Um, it was built in eighteen fifty-two, they were twin wooden buildings, you can see us here. Um, it's a, it's a block that has a mix of these wooden buildings that a handful were built in nestled between brownstones and a few larger buildings. Moving along, so they were built, you can see on the sandborne from eighteen eighty-seven, is everyone seeing that? When they were built, you can see they had the two porches adjacent. But by the nineteen twenties, they'd already cut back the porch at Two Fifty, Two Fifty, which is, no, now I'm backwards, at Two Fifty-two. Um, so there was, then you can see by the forties at our building, Two Fifty, they had a full porch and had cut it back to a portico. And that remained the same through the forties. And then by the eighties, everything was gone and we just had this one little awning here, very sad. Then by twenty thirteen, the owners of Two Fifty-two did a full restoration sometime in between eighty-one and twenty thirteen of their building, bringing back the full porch. And there were still just the portico at Two Fifty-two, no, Two Fifty, losing mind. Um, the current owners, um, restored the house, replaced the windows, restored the facade, but didn't yet, you know, remove the nonhistoric awning, but didn't restore the stoop or the portico. Um, and as you can see at this point in time, it's all, you know, not historic and fairly degraded. So our intent is to, um, well, so part of our process was to look at sort of pre-existing conditions and historic precedents for these buildings that have the paired side-by-side stoop. The best way to sort of resolve these different conditions of the railing, you know, what our concerns are historic, um, but also maintenance, shared ownership, you know, more contemporary concerns. So we looked at a variety of buildings in the neighborhood and how they dealt with the situation. And what we've decided to do is mirror that nineteen forties condition. So basically, put a portico on our stair and rebuild our stoop to be paired with the twin, as it were, and do a restoration of the cornice, the posts, and the wrought iron fence in the front, which is, you know, from an arguable amount of time. And redo the areaway, of which there's, you know, nothing remains. We all on the same page, um, so here we are, our plan is to demo the existing condition again, which is not historic and damaged. And try to return to our harmonious relationship with the adjacent building. One of our concerns, which we talked about with the, one of the neighborhood associations, was part of the reason to go with the portico was to bring more light, both to the first floor and the basement level, but that were, our intent is to, you know, make it more beautiful and be historic. And throughout trying to, as it was originally, match exactly the cornice of the adjacent building, match the columns, and match the posts as best as we can. I think what Ms. Blunt brought up is that we don't have a post right here. You can see my little hand, which when we spoke to them, we are certainly open to putting that in, um, so that hopefully won't be an issue. Uh, so these are just the plans, demoing the existing condition, coming back in, redoing the areaway, doing the new stoop, and the new fence in the front, we're adding a sliding door under the stoop to allow access. These are some details of that door and some close-ups of the details, again, looking at Two Fifty-two to try to match that as best as we can. Again, close-ups of the details to work on matching it, the wrought iron fence, which we look to the nineteen forties photo in terms of matching. And then we'll be restoring the front door, I believe one of the associations also asked that we increase the size of the top rail, which we are also comfortable with, if that is, you know, of interest. Um, and we'll be restoring the antique light that is still there, again, with the intent of bringing it back as historic as we can while maintaining a few of our current concerns about light and access. And that is the whole thing before we crash. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions or comments from board members or committee men, uh, committee members on these, uh, on Two Fifty Cumberland Street?
Motion to approve, that's all I have.
Okay, do you have a second?
Bill Flannoy, second.
You have a motion to approve and a second.
Irene Jan, I'd like to make an amendment.
Yes, Irene.
That we, uh, add the, uh, historic, uh, organizations, uh, comments that the second gatepost be included on the, um, fence to balance it. on the um, fence to balance it.
No objection, it was understood. Thank you, Irene.
Thank you, Miss Duke. Okay. There are no further comments or questions. We have a motions and sec- uh, second. And we have a friendly amendment, agreed to. And okay, I guess, uh, I guess, well, again, Caroline, I guess you'll do the um, roll call?
Sure. Uh, Hazra Ali.
Is Ali, you're muted?
Yes. Esther Blount?
Yes.
Patrick Kristoffen?
Yes.
John Do?
Yes.
Uh, Carlton Gordon?
Yes.
Okay. Brian Howard?
Yes.
Karen Johnson?
Yes.
Philo Noi?
Yes, I also accept the friendly amendment.
Irene Jan?
Yes.
Judy Stanton?
Yes.
Just for the record, Ernie Augustus? Elizabeth Ginsberg? Alan Washington? Motion carries unanimously ten zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next one is one Sydney Place in Brooklyn Heights. Uh, number of things that want, they want to do concerning windows, uh, reconfigurations. Uh, also that there is a, they wish to, this is with an eight unit or an eight family building that they wish to make a single-family building. Uh, and they want to do some o- other works around the roof and bulkhead. And uh, one question I had even had before we start, is this building currently occupied or not? Uh, go ahead, uh, presenters for one Sydney Place.
Hi, my name is Olivia Bilnick. The building is currently occupied, uh, but uh, agreements have been made with tenants to vacate the building shortly.
Okay, that's uh, important, because this is a, uh, understand, just want to point out, this is a, since it's an eight-unit building, it is rent stabilized, so these are tenants, these are rent-stabilized tenants, and I just want to underline that as part of, and that they have certain rights that if they wish to forego, these have to be done as, as rent-stabilized tenants. Since it's more than six units, these are rent, these are rent-stabilized tenants. I just wanted to underline that. Okay, go ahead.
I'm not sure which percent, yeah. I'm not sure what percentage of the building is rent-stabilized, but I think there are a few apartments, but not, not the entire building.
Well, once, I mean, if, any building that's six or more units, uh, technically falls as rent-stabilized tenants and they have certain rights for lease renewals and and to be able to stay and what the rents will go up. So any, once you, you, you've crossed that line from six units to more, that makes it a rent-stayway. It's not a, there may be some who are rent-controlled from back in the seventies and the sixties who are still living there. But at a minimum, every occupied apartment is a rent-stabilized unit. I just wanted to underline that uh, as part of, and make that as part of the record. All right, so Mr. Bill, let's go ahead and give us your application.
Okay, I'm gonna sh- share my screen right now. Can uh, can everyone see the cover page with the photo of the building?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a, it's a corner building on the corner of Sydney Place and Giralliman Street. Uh, the existing five-story building, uh, ten apartments. And uh, so this is the exterior photo. Uh, it, the location in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District is right here. This is a site plan. As you can see, again, Sydney Place is located here, Giralliman is here. So the, the long axis of the building is uh, located on Sydney Place. This is a nineteen forties tax photo of, of the building as it appeared uh, previously. Now, this is the Giralliman Street elevation, which is the, the skinny elevation. It's approximately fifteen feet. You can see it, uh, an existing photo of the building along with the existing elevation. Some of the changes that we're looking to make is um, re-cladding the existing cementitious coating, the brownstone coating. Um, adding, um, uh, basically rest- restoring the uh, previous cresting that was present in the building, uh, uh, in the nineteen forties tax photo. Um, replacing, uh, sorry, uh, adding back the um, slate shingles onto the mansard roof. Currently, there's a asphalt uh, shingles. Um, uh, putting back the fiberglass cornice that used to uh, be present here and that wrapped the building. Um, here, there's a nonhistoric door that was uh, um, renovated to, uh, we would like to remove it and re- and restore the window, uh, previously. And uh, as we turn the corner on, onto Sydney Place, the broad facade, some of those changes are, are expressed in this elevation as well, including um, restoring the cresting uh, up on the roof, um, the slate shingles, the fiberglass cornice, I'll be, I'll be at the mansard roof. Um, there's uh, some existing uh, air conditioning penetrations that we would like to infill with uh, matching brick. Um, we, we, we're gonna do some exploratory uh, probes of the brick conditions. We're gonna strip a few areas of the building to determine if the brick is worth uh, um, uh, exposing. Uh, but right now, we're just proposing to uh, repaint the existing brick. Um, but if we determine that the brick is in good condition, we would uh, expose the brick. So that, that's uh, to be determined. Um, we do have to provide um, a roof, uh, uh, hatch, uh, ru- roof access uh, bulkhead up on the top, and it's designed so that it's minimally visible. Uh, it slopes with the slope of the stair. And you'll see in plan that it's as, as small as can be. Uh, but because of the prominent location of the building, i- it is visible from certain parts of, of Giralliman Street, and I'll, I'll show photos of that. Uh, and we're proposing five condensers up on the roof as well here. The roof is, is also going to be a recreational space. And uh, uh, cresting that we're providing on the roof is gonna double as the ru- roof railing for that recreation space. Um, then uh, the building has an existing uh, two-story extension here. We're going to be removing the nonhistoric wood railing, um, that's at the extension currently. Uh, and replacing it with a, a more um, uh, downplayed uh, metal railing here for the terrace. Uh, the building also has an existing curb cut and one-car parking pad. And we'd like to uh, build an accessory enclosed uh, garage for, for that one car. And uh, essentially have the roof of that garage double as a, a, a roof terrace for that first floor area. So he, here's an enlargement of that um, garage. It'll have a roll-up uh, garage door that would simulate a carriage house door. And uh, uh, it would be a, a masonry uh, cladding for, for that building, for that accessory building. Then turning the corner on the secondary facade on Sydney Place. Uh, you could see that this is the existing elevation. Right now, there's a fire escape. Uh, we'd be removing that fire escape. We'd be doing all the things we're doing on the other facades like uh, uh, including the cresting on the roof. Uh, doing the slate shingles, um, adding the cornice back. Uh, but as, as we move down the building, we would like to increase the masonry opening at the second floor. This is currently the, the condition here. We'd like to uh, double the size of that masonry opening. And it's, it's shown here uh, in this, in this red box. And then, so that, I, I was describing the uh, elevations from the second to the roof. And as you move down the building from the basement and first floor, currently there's one window in the rear facade right here. We would like to remove it and create three punched openings simulating the rhythm of the windows in the neighborhood. Um, and, and uh, one of the openings would be a door that would provide access to the roof terrace above the proposed uh, one-story garage. Located in the si- in the side yard here, the secondary facade. This is uh, uh, kind of a more detailed view of that garage. You can see the, the existing parking pad. And uh, the proposed parking pad would, would look something like this. Sorry, the proposed garage would look something like this, and, and the three openings would be located here. And again, you have the uh, existing elevation here, with just with a one window on the first floor, one window in the basement. Kind of lo- lo- located here in the fire escape. And, and this wood uh, railing, all of that would be removed and replaced with a new metal railing, three new punched openings, and this one-story accessory building. Then kind of uh, zooming in more on the work that we're gonna be doing um, on the mansard roof area. This is a, a close-up of that nineteen forties tax photo. This is that existing cresting that we're gonna be replacing. This parapet is uh, is existing and in good condition, so that, that's to remain. Um, we're gonna be restoring these uh, slate shingles to, to, to mansard roof. And we're gonna be restoring the wood uh, detailing around the existing windows um, on the fourth floor. And uh, re- replacing um, this um, cornice that was previously removed. So you could see, you know, the building in the nineteen forties, very glamorous. Today, it, you know, lacks a lot of those features. So we're excited about putting a lot of those features back onto the building. Um, now to the roof level, these are the mockups that are in place at the building now. Um, this uh, railing around the building represents that cresting that um, uh, we were talking about before in the elevation. This is the elevation of that one-story bulkhead that would take you up uh, from the lower floors up to the roof. An elevation of the proposed uh, condensers. Uh, there would be a stucco cladding on this bulkhead in the, in, in a color called cloud, which would uh, disappear in an overcast sky. Um, and here you could see some photos from the different uh, stations in the, on the proposed roof plan. So these are some photographs of the visibility uh, from uh, uh, Giralliman Street and Sydney Place. The, the light gray represent areas where the bulkhead is visible. And the dark gray represent areas from where the railing is visible. But the, the railing is gonna be that uh, historic cresting, so I think um, seeing the railing is actually a net positive um, intervention. And then you could see kind of uh, the view down Giralliman Street uh, with the, with the, with visibility. And then, uh, here, here are photographs of uh, the railing, the visibility of the railing. You could kind of, you could see it here, see it there. So that would be the, the cresting of the, of the historic building. And this is the existing section. Um, again, so we'd be removing this nonhistoric uh, railing here, the wood railing on the second floor. There's an existing open parking pad that we're, would be enclosing. So it looks something like this, uh, adding a rooftop bulkhead, condensers on the roof. Adding this uh, metal railing on the second floor and adding this one-story garage on the first floor. And uh, here are some uh, historic precedents for these uh, one-story uh, accessory um, carriage house uh, uh, buildings. The black and white are photos from the nineteen forties showing um, co- other corner buildings, not, not all corner buildings, but mo- most, some corner buildings that have these uh, adjacent one-story garages um, supplementary to the main buildings. And then here are some uh, more modern examples as well in the neighborhood. And uh, then the floor plans, uh, this is the proposed and existing cellar plan. The proposed and existing basement plan. So this is where that parking uh, structure happens. You can see that there's already an existing curb cut and existing parking space. So we're proposing to enclose it here. And, and the roof of that parking space forms the, the roof terrace uh, for the first floor with the three new punched openings here. Uh, a new railing around the second floor terrace. And uh, the, the rooftop terrace here, um, with a very skinny bulkhead and uh, five condensers. And there's actually a fire, two fireplace flues that are gonna be behind the condensers, but they're actually concealed by the condenses, so that they're, they're no more, they're, it's not an additional visible element. And uh, that's the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, I'll go, now we'll go over to the Brooklyn Heights Association. Uh, Irene or Ms. Stanton, do you have any comments on the presentation and the work?
Yes, I do. Yes, um, our committee met with this applicant on Friday, last Friday. And we made some um, recommendations, which he's pretty much um, incorporated in his, his um, presentation tonight. That is, we really wanted to see the um, cornice replaced, restored um, above the mansard, and he's just said he's gonna do that. Um, we also wanted to see the mansard restored, and he's, he's also proposed to put the slate back. And um, we also feel strongly that if the brick is, is um, in good, good enough condition, they need to do some probes and see if the brick can be restored rather than painting it over. And he said he's gonna do that. Um, I think we're gonna wanna see more detailed drawings, but the time this goes to the commission for a hearing, but for tonight's purposes, um, it looks pretty good to me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stanton. Uh, are there any other questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Ellie.
Um, how high is the, the um, historic railing on the roof? How high does that go? Is it as high as a person?
It's gonna be forty-two inches, so it's gonna be like a, like a handrail kind of thing.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other uh, comments or questions from committee members or board members?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, and because we were discussing in the chat, um, and it just hasn't been affirmatively stated by the presenter. Um, how, uh, how is the building being um, consolidated as, as the owner made um, like agreements with each of the tenants? I'm just curious, the process behind which is this happening?
To that, I am not, I can't speak to that. I don't have tha- that information. Um, I, I will just say that um, this, in the beginning of the presentation, we were talking about rent stabilization to rent control. Um, it, it's true that the building probably at one point was a hundred percent rent-controlled, rent-stabilized. It, it is not one hundred percent at this point. Uh, so there are units in the building that are not rent-controlled, rent-stabilized. Um, but uh, again, um, from, from where I understand, everything is being done through the legal channels and um, yeah, so uh, I, I ca- I can't speak to what methods, uh, but you know, I'm, I'm sure, you know, i- i- if the building is being vacated, it's being vacated in, in a legal manner with people making um, uh, cop- uh, agreements uh, with each other. So no, no one's being, I would say intimidated or anything like that to leave.
Well, I understand, Mr. Villas, you're the architect. This is the only, although the concerns that we're having are more of tenants, especially tenants' rights, and that's really not your area. Sometimes, you know, we don't normally, you know, really get into it on these applications, but in this kind of an instance, uh, I think the, I know I'm personally concerned, and I think a number of the uh, committee members are concerned about the fact that, again, you have a number of units, at least eight units, which, and so the building still does come under the rent stabilization uh, guidelines. And that these units will be lost to renters, uh, pe- you know, and especially for the consolidation to one family structure. They may have the long-term right to do this, but we still are very concerned about this, and that's, I think it's gonna be probably part of whatever decision we make tonight. Are there any other questions or comments from?
Carlton, Bill Fornoy.
Yes, Bill.
Okay, Carlton, I believe if fifty percent of the building of the tenants are still rent-controlled, the building's rent-controlled. So I believe if it's four apartments, then it's still rent-controlled overall. My question basically is the railing, where is the, I'm sorry, I was busy doing something else. The railing, where is the railing at? And can I see if it's in the front of the building or not? Because I have an issue that railing isn't in front of the building.
It's along the perimeter of the roof.
You say perimeter, what do you mean by perimeter? Is the entire railing?
Yeah, exactly, yes. And that, and that's the historic condition. It's essentially, so I'll just go back to the original tax photo. So you could see the cresting here essentially is a decorative element.
Mr. Vilnits, feel free to share a screen again.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is the historic photo of the building. You could see the decorative cresting that we're talking about is this element here. And it wraps the entire perimeter of the building, so it's right up at the cornice line.
So you're saying basically you're going to replace that railing with access to the roof?
Yes.
So the railing's up to the cornice, you're saying?
Yes.
Thanks. I'm opposed to that because I feel that if people have access to the edge of the building, then people can see it from the street.
The goal is to see it from the street. It's a historic element that we're restoring back to the building.
I'm sorry, let me, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. See activity from the street. If people are basically having a party or having an outdoor event on the roof, it can be seen from the street. That's what I'm talking about.
All right, Bill, that's it?
I have a question.
Ms. Ellie has a question. Yeah, I wanted to.
Yes, I just wanted, I just want to say that the owner, the architect has announced that it's a one-family. It's going into becoming a one-family. And the fact that he's proceeding to apply for plans means that he has somehow arranged to get cash for keys with these tenants. So there's, it's not a building with tenants that have been evicted. The law for eviction ended on the last Saturday. So I don't think these people are being evicted. They must have gone into some financial arrangement to have the people move. So I'm not sure that that should influence. I think it's a beautiful plan and I'm happy to see that he listened to what the Brooklyn Heights Association recommended. And he's done a very tasteful restoration of this building.
Yeah, I could confirm that there is no eviction proceedings against the tenants. That I feel pretty certain about.
No, I do, yeah. I don't disagree with you, Ms. Ellie. Just again, my concern is to be sure, and we want to make sure that the tenants' rights are protected. You know, and it sounds good. I just don't want to find out that we did something and we didn't at least speak up for the tenants. And later on, we find that something bad has happened. But we just want to make sure that the tenant, that we've, we want to make sure that this is still a rent-stabilized building, at least minimally. If not, also maybe with some rent-controlled tenants, possibly. I don't know what the history of the tenancy are in there. But we want to make sure that those rights are protected. And as well as to hopefully provide improvements and work for this building as well.
We don't even know if the building's fully occupied. I don't think it is.
Yeah, we don't know. We don't have that information before us.
Somebody on our committee, somebody on our committee lives on that block. And I think she thought there was only one tenant left, but Ilya, do you know that? Do you know if that then, if all the apartments are fully occupied or not?
It's more than one tenant. I don't know exactly how many tenants, but it is. So for example, on this photo, the, these two floors is a duplex apartment for the entire building. So that entire, that's one apartment. And then there are two apartments per floor otherwise. So I, yeah, I can't tell you with certainty the occupancy.
Duplex used to be occupied by the owners. That was an owner-occupied apartment.
Yeah, it's not the owner-occupied now. I think it is a renter there, but it could have been in the past. You're right.
May I interject?
Oh, yes, Ms. Carolyn, go ahead, Carolyn Church.
Okay, I may not have it all straight, but before a building that is rent-stabilized or rent-controlled can be converted, HPD, the Department of, HPD goes through a process by which you must get something called a certificate of no harassment regarding the removal or the relocation of the tenants. And it must be presented to the Department of Buildings in order for the project to begin. I don't know if this answers all the questions, but I am saying this to, you know, that there are some checks and balances in place to take care of some of the concerns that I'm hearing being raised.
I know Carolyn, the certificate, yeah. I know Carolyn, the certificate of no harassment. Okay, yeah, let me just finish my point and then the certificate of no harassment pops up. I know for, what am I looking for? Yes, SROs, you know, single-room occupancies. I know that. I don't know if it requires in this particular instance. My only concern again is just protection of rent-stabilized. Okay, yes, Ms. Ellie.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, I asked, I went already.
All right, Daughtry.
You could, you could call for your motion. Let me take it down.
I just want to make. Just want to say that I fully support the comments that have come out of our conversation. And I wish that we had the ability and the power to have an impact on buildings that are multifamily turning into one single family because of the housing crisis that so many of us are seeing. Unfortunately, we do not. And because of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, before I go any further, I see Mr. Do has a hand up.
Because I was going to make a motion to approve.
So you want a second?
It's already second.
Well, that's all right. We got a, we, motion's been approved in a second. I just will ask Daughtry if you want to take a friendly amendment that the owners shall, we'll say, follow all, let's say, laws and regulations regarding rent control and rent-stabilized tenants for this property.
I will accept that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I have my hand. I have a question.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Question. So yes, I tried to look up HPD information while the presentation was being made. I just want to add that according to the HPD website, the building is not currently validly registered with HPD. And it needs to be every year. So just passing that along to the architect, that is what the HPD site is saying.
Yeah, I know there's a very large, very long delays right now with HP registration. So, you know, I personally submitted two building registrations back in September and they still haven't been processed. So, but your point's taken.
Okay, we have a motion, second, Bill, you have something else you wanted to?
Call a question. We've discussed this.
Call the question, all right?
Yes, the facts we're discussing are nice, but has nothing to do with the design of the building.
And nothing to do with the landmarks.
Ms. Stanton?
None of this is germane to the landmarks process.
All right, yes. And we understand, I understand. I think we all understand that. Okay, Ms. Church, can you give us the roll call?
Just before I do that, I'm sorry, but the location, this location doesn't fall into one of the areas for the certificate of no harassment. In Brooklyn, it's only Greenpoint, Williamsburg, so my apologies there.
Okay, go ahead, Ms.
Okay, I'll begin the roll call. I'm Hazra Ali.
Yes.
Esther Brown.
Yes.
Audrey Kastoffen.
Yes.
Dondu.
Yes.
Carlton Gordon.
Yes.
Ryan Howard.
Yes.
Karen Johnson.
Yes.
Bill Fornoy.
Yes.
Irene Jenner.
Yes.
Judy Stanton.
Yes.
For the record, Ernest Augustus, Elizabeth Ginsberg, Alan Washington. What is unanimous, ten zero zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And our next one is one twenty-five Clinton Street, also in Brooklyn Heights. This is an Italian, you know, Italianate Anglo-Anglo-Italianate townhouse. They want to do some work on the front, on the facades, with windows, change work, roof trimming. And yes, a number of other things throughout the building.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Doug Segulha. I'm one of the architects working on this project. And I can go. Is it okay if I share a screen?
Okay, just spell out your name, just so.
Sure, it's Douglas, D O U G L A S, last name is Segulha, S E G U L J A.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just sharing real quick. Okay, everybody, you can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so let me go into full screen. So we are working on a, it's a, currently a five-family townhouse at one seventy-five Clinton. I think maybe you'd said one twenty-five, but it's one seven-five Clinton Street in Brooklyn.
Yes, one seven-five. If I misspoke, sorry, one seventy-five Clinton Street.
Just wanted to make sure we had the right. The construction date was eighteen forty-five and it is in the Anglo-Italianate style. Mainly brick and brownstone and timber on the exterior. So it's located here, just kind of at the bottom edge of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Right off of, it's on Clinton Street, right off of Atlantic Avenue. There is the one-story Key Foods here, which is the, you'll see, is the corner lot. And I think that's, and then it's to the north is State Street, where you have just a sliver of a view through the garden towards the back facade. And then, of course, over the one-story Key Foods, there's a little bit of a view from both of those sides. You'll see in later photos that it's really primarily a view of the top two floors. So here's the building. You have the front street elevation, the front facade, the side view, the Key Foods is here right to the right. You can see it's just a single story. And then the, of course, here, close-up views right in front of on the street, where you have the bay window here that has changed over the years. And so we'll, we'll talk through the tax photos and how we're trying to restore that as best we, we kind of using a couple of different images to create what we think is kind of an accurate representation of what that would potentially have been and had the best use as residential property now. So just quickly run through the plans. On the lower level, we have a cellar, which is mainly going to be for storage and utility. This is, of course, all below ground. The second story is the basement garden level. This will, this, the lower two levels will be a duplex unit. On this, the lowest level, the garden level, there would be primarily bedrooms down here, one at the front and then two at the back. On the next floor up, this would be the parlor level. This would be the main floor for the duplex. So you'd have the living room, dining room, kitchen, and then a terrace off of the back. More of a deck down into the garden. On the next level up, it would be the second unit. And this would be a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, with the bedrooms on the front, the living room space on the back. And this would have a terrace that would be atop of the lower, the lower unit below. And then as we move up, there is another unit, again, two-bedroom, two-bath. Living room on the front with a side bedroom. And then another living room or another bedroom in the back with a bathroom off the back. And then kind of a small Juliet-style balcony here that we'll look at. And then the top level is one, two-bedroom, one-bath. And it originally had kind of this awkward attic space here along the back, but it was really unusable. The head height was, it wasn't, there wasn't really enough space there for that. And so what we've, we're proposing doing is carving the interior of that out, but leaving the parapet. So we're not touching the boundaries of that or anything about that and creating this terrace along the back. And so we'll look at various views of that, just to show that this is actually not visible from any of the streets. Anything that we're doing along this back facade there, as relates to the carved-out terrace here. And then just a roof plan. Okay, so along the front, one of the proposals that's before you all tonight is replacing and repairing quite a bit of the facade. The big one is replacing the windows with just the double-hung windows that we'll see in the tax photos. So going back to the historical double-hung windows that were there. And then repairing cornice detailing and brownstone. And then on the bay window here, using the tax photos to replicate, again, as best we can what was happening here, you'll see that there was, originally this was a commercial space below, and so there was a door. But that, for the use now, would be impractical. And so we've proposed just sort of replicating the windows around. So you'll see here in the historic photos, we have the nineteen twenty-two tax photo, which actually shows, it's a little deceiving in that these are, these appear to be boarded up. It's somewhat difficult to tell. They just sort of seems to be infill here, but then in a little bit later photo in the nineteen forty, you can see a lot of where a lot of this detail starts to come in. You see the laundromat both in twenty-two and in forty, that this was commercial space below. And so that brings us to our image where we're, again, trying to faithfully recreate what's going on here in the nineteen forties here. And then down below, sort of pulling in some of those details in a way that's also practical for, you know, for the bedroom of this residential unit that will be down there and in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood as well. Here is a view, just kind of an axon of this facade. And the windows with the double-hung windows. And let's see, that's kind of mostly it. Yeah, we're just painting, painting white to match, clean, clean all of this up to match existing. On the back, you see the deck down into the garden with this new opening off of the kitchen on the parlor level with the terrace here, the small balcony. And then the carve-out here, you'll see in our, the perspectives that you really don't see much of this. The balcony in question, the balcony here, we're, we're putting all of these openings in the existing, existing openings. Here, we've lowered it to create the door, just out on this small, small little space that we'll, again, we'll look at on the rear facade. Here's another view of that, kind of a bird's eye view there. This is staff-level stuff that they said we should skip through. So here's a rendering and the existing photo of the rear facade. So you have the fire escape that we're removing. And we're creating as well as all of this deck up here that's a bit of a mess. And all of this is getting repaired and painted. And then we're creating the different terr- different terraces. I mean, one of the, in the brief that the clients gave us, they really requested each of the, the tenants to have outdoor space, which they felt, especially in light of the last couple of years with the pandemic, was, was very important, um, to try to achieve that, and so what we've tried to do, I think these, these were really existing. You have the garden, you have the terrace here. Um, we're doing that with the carve-out on the top level. On here, we have this, this little balcony. And we understand they're not, uh, we do have some examples at the end that we want to show you. We know that we're not super common at the time, but we've tried to, um, replicate or at least keep it on balance with a lot of the fire escapes, the detailing of that, the kind of thin railing, so that it feels harmonious, even if not exactly, um, faithful to the original detail. A lot of this is, we're having to pull from different sources, and so that's part of what we're trying to do with that balcony. Um, so here's some back, uh, elevations, you would see of that. Um, we can go through that. I think we've talked about all of that enough. Um, here's an aerial view, bird's-eye view again of the, um, of the house uh, in the site. Here's the Key Foods, um, State Street is here, Clinton Street, and then Atlantic here. Um, here's views from the Key Foods side. Um, so see, you can get, these are actual photos, you can get a sense, this is the building here now, so you see just the top sliver along the back. This is from the, from the State Street. There's a fence here. And if you look kind of past all the houses along the row, you see just the upper portion. Um, and so here's a rendering, that same view with this rendered. And so you see that we're trying to keep this, you just, really, we've, we've cleaned up the back facade, and then we've just tried to keep this balcony kind of on um, on balance with the fire escapes that are in, in this, in, in neighbor, really the adjacent buildings there. Um, here, uh, we just had some close-up details, so you could see, see that a little bit better, because we know it's, this, the images are, are difficult. Um, these are just some to give you more context of the space. Here it is in the nineteen eighties photo, so part of what we're replicating below is, is going back to, to, to these images as well. We're, we're really trying to pull from difference, different ti- different periods, because what original, originally was the commercial spaces as early as we're showing it or that we have record of. Um, and so here it is in the street elevation, just so you can see it in row with the other three houses. Um, here are some examples we wanted to show, um, in the back, we're doing, um, something that is a little bit more um, contemporary on the lower two levels, and so we wanted to show this is actually the house behind us on State Street. Um, and so in the lower levels, they've, um, they've chosen something similar to what we're proposing, um, with just sort of very thin and light um, execution of the materials there. Um, here's a, another example, um, that just shows the, the kind of terraces and the deck into the garden, um, similar to what we're, we're proposing. Another one that shows, um, the terrace, um, out the back with kind of a small, small balcony here. And here's one actually that has a similar carved-out terrace up here, and just a little line of sight. You can see, you really don't see any of this. Um, actually, you know, I think I forgot to point that out. Let me just show it in this image again, really quick. So I should call out, here is the, this was with the carved-out. You really, you don't see anything in here. Um, and so I just wanted to, to show, we're, we're keeping the windows in here, but you don't see any of the, that at the top. And then the last image is just a few examples of these, these small, small little ba- balconies. As I said, we're trying to do something on balance. This one is in the Garden Historic District, or the Carroll Gardens Historic District. This is in Crown Heights, and this is in the Brooklyn Heights, and so just these simple little balconies, just to give the tenants a little bit of outs- outdoor space. Um, and yes, I think that is all we've got, so I can stop sharing that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Segulja. Uh, I just wanted to point out, that's my regular Key Foods, so I'm a little surprised I didn't show up in any of your, uh, photographs, but other than that.
Well, we, we can Photoshop you in later if you want to be in there for.
Just Photoshop me in with my cart later, coming out with my, uh, with my fresh salmon, but anyway. Uh, any, uh, first, we'll go over to Brooklyn Heights Association, Irene or Judy Stanton.
Yeah, we also met with this applicant last Friday and, and, and have some suggestions. Um, we actually feel quite strongly that they need to eliminate that third-story balcony. That kind of an addition is never seen on the nineteenth-century rowhouses in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The examples that are shown are in other historic districts. The terraces on top of extensions or on top of enclosed tea porches are frequently seen, but not that kind of balcony, so we think the, um, and the condensing unit that's intended for that balcony can be relocated to the fourth-story, fourth-story terrace with minimal disruption, so we would say nix that third-story balcony. And also the paint color on the front facade, um, we think it's too much white. The, the bay window and the additional window pediments and the mansard are not original Greek Revival elements. So we don't see the need to paint them the same color as the door. Uh, and, and the historic photos indicate that the facade had been painted a variety of different colors in the past, so we would suggest perhaps uh, the, considering restoring the front door surround to a brownstone color, and then the, the, um, the bay window could be gray. And perhaps the other windows and the cornice could also be gray, but in other words, too much white. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Stanton. Uh, any other questions or comments from committee members, board members? If none, eh, yes, uh, Ms. Ali.
Yeah, I know the tax photo is black and white, and it's difficult to tell, because a, a light color would look like white, but do you have any idea what those wooden, um, wooden parts in the front of the building was?
Well, we really don't. It's, it is difficult to tell. Uh, as Miss Stanton pointed out, it, it seems like over the years, it's been different colors from, from what evidence we have, so, um, it's difficult to know exactly what it was at that period, at least from the research we've been able to, to pull together.
So, so was the owner leaning towards doing what the association suggested?
The, the owner's preference was actually the white. They prefer the, um, just the clean quality of that, and so that was why we, uh, we completely respect, um, the, the Brooklyn societies there, or the Brooklyn Heights societies there, their feedback on that, but the owners had preferred the white. They liked, they felt like it was cleaner. The, the house next to it, adjacent, has the white.
Um, so is it a stark white or something like an antique white?
It's more of an antique white.
Okay.
Pardon?
As, uh, Bill Fanoi?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the application, uh, but I'd like to, uh, prove it with the conditions that Miss Stanton suggested.
You're cutting back and forth, Bill, so.
Oh, sorry. Like to approve the application with the suggestions that Judy Stanton gave.
Thanks, Bill.
I will second it.
Okay. It's been seconded. Yes, Audrey.
I have a question about, um, before we vote. I was trying to get this in, but Bill got in there before I could. I just have a question about, um, the front facade, actually. I agree with, um, the comments that Judy's made so far. But I'm surprised she didn't bring up the, um, three different types of windows at the front. Um, you've got double-hung on the upper floors, then you've got six-over-six, and I think you have something else there. Can you speak for one second about, I know, I heard you say you wanted to re- go back to double-hung, but the historical photos have six-over-six, and so I'm just wondering why there's so many different kinds of windows on the front.
Um, yeah, can I still share my screen, and I can go back to that? Let's see.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So in all of the historic tax photos, well, the most recent, you know, from the eighties has the six-over-six. But all of the older versions have the double-hung with, um, this kind of more ornate bay, and so this is we're pulling a little bit from, from this photo for kind of the lower section here. Just because this was the commercial, but really, we're, we're really primarily trying to go back to, to the kind of um, this sort of nineteen forties i- in this era, era, um, for the majority of the building, but there's here.
I get that. Could you go to your rendering of the front quickly?
See.
Uh, you can go back one, uh, go back one. Yeah, it's hard to see. So you've got double-hung, then you've got transom over two light vertical, and then you've got six-over-six. I'm just wondering, m- m- maybe you could consider, you know, at, at least in the bay, having the same window types to unify that bulk?
As in, basically, this over lower, this, this appears to be how it is from the oldest photos we have. Uh, or the night, or the, the eighteen forty, but, uh, excuse me, the nineteen forty, but this we don't, this is, was the commercial down here, so let me show you.
Yeah, but that's not commercial anymore, so I'm just, like, you're proposing, you're reducing the number of units. Um, I'm glad it's still multiple units, but it's not commercial at that level. As a matter of fact, I think it's a master bedroom, so I don't buy the, like, commercial argument. So just, I don't know, food for thought, architect-to-architect, maybe you could consider that.
Sure. Noted, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have. I have a question.
Uh, Brian, yeah.
Um, so we often, uh, discuss, um, with applicants who are doing like rear extensions, the uh, safety, uh, and like integrity of neighboring structures, and I was wondering if you had mentioned the chimney of, uh, this property?
In, in what way? We haven't, we don't have any proposal to change, change the chimney if, if that's.
No, I just, I just noted on, uh, the DOB website that a month ago, there was a violation, because the chimney appears to be falling off.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that you guys were taking care of that.
Oh, yes, yes, that's big, that's being addressed. It's an old chimney that had fallen loose, and, and the owners have, uh, addressed it, and I think they're working through the, with the DOB to get that addressed in terms of the vi- actual violation. It was, it was just a freestanding chimney, not one of the brick, the brick chimneys, like an exhaust pipe.
Thank you.
Yep.
Judy, for the record, could you please repeat, uh, your comments?
Oh, we see, well, yeah, okay, um, or I can send them to Karen or Daughtry for the minutes. We suggest that they should eliminate the third-story balcony, because it's rarely seen, and it's not seen in our historic district, um, that we also think that the uh, there's, there's too much white, and we would rather the, um, suggest a gray, uh, be used rather than white for the, uh, front windows and um, of the door surround be more of a brownstone color.
But otherwise, you like.
Yeah.
So nothing to incorporate Daughtry's suggestion about the six-over-six?
No, I think the committee didn't focus on that, and so I, I, I guess I don't, how? I don't remember.
As Daughtry said, it's architect-to-architect, more of a suggestion than anything else.
So we can proceed. We can proceed with the motion.
And, oh, and Elizabeth Ginsberg has joined us. Hi, Elizabeth. Okay.
We can proceed with the motion and then add Daughtry's comments under the motion.
Um, I have another question, and I'm sorry, Ms. Richardson just reminded me, I have the same question. You're removing the fire escape. This is a multi-family building. What is the path, the second means of egress out of the building?
Um, it's, we're, we're sprinkling the building, and it's a non-combustible stair, um, and so we're, we're taking care of it that way.
Okay, so we're good with, and I'd like to also include, uh, in the motion, the suggestion that Daughtry gave. Not that it's part of the motion, but just a suggestion.
I think it's understood.
I, I need, I need more clarity than that. Ambiguity, um, doesn't help me when I have to write resolutions or recommendations.
Sorry, Carolyn, you need a, a clarification on what?
Is it part of the motion or is it not? I, I need the motion specifically state, and any amendments as well.
No, I said that was not part of the motion, just a recommendation.
I'm sorry, recommendation is part of the motion.
Suggestion. It was a suggestion. That's all it is. It's not part of the, uh, motion, uh, it's just a suggestion, and, uh, that's all it is. It's, it will not be part of the, of, if, all the other items that Miss Stanton laid out will be part of the, uh, this motion and part of our, of this, uh, board's recommendation. Okay, if there are no other further comments or questions, uh, I'd like to get the, uh, roll call started on this one. Okay, if you can't, uh, if you can't do it, Carolyn, I'll do it.
Ms. Richardson.
I'll read off from this. Okay, I'll read off from this.
So, so, sorry. After all this time, I still battle with, uh, my mute button. Okay, uh, Hazra Ali?
Yes.
Esther Brown?
Yes.
Audrey Castafen?
Yes.
And John Do?
Yes.
Carlton Gordon?
Carlton, you're muted.
I'll come back.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, you, Brian Howard?
Yes.
Karen Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, I'm guessing you're a yes?
Yes.
Irene Jenner?
Yes.
Judy Stanton?
Yes.
I see Elizabeth joined us. Elizabeth Ginsberg, you join us early enough to vote?
Yeah, yes, and my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, so it's eleven, yeah, we're up to eleven zero zero.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and I will say yes too, since no one called my name.
I'm leaving it up to Caroline Church.
For some reason, you're out of order, Bill. Like, Fanoi should come before Carlton, but you don't. You come after Brian, I think.
I don't know why that is, but I will just basically be happy that I'm included.
If you all don't forget to call me for lunch. All right, uh, chairs report. A few items, I'll try to go through them as quick as I can. Um, one of the things, uh, that's, everybody's been talking about is the eviction moratorium. As I think almost everybody here knows now, it's been, uh, there's no longer a moratorium. Uh, the local politicians have, I guess you could say, volunteered or will assist people who are in need of the assistance. Uh, I know the governor's trying, trying to couple, a couple of things with the monies. Uh, it's not a good time, but the eviction moratorium has been lifted. A couple of items from the Times, New York Times, uh, there is a December twenty-six in the real estate section. A whole thing on downtown Brooklyn, which is, I think, worth reading. They call it "in the middle of everything." Uh, there's also a lovely article in this past Sunday's Metropolitan section of the New York Times, Janu- uh, yes, January sixteen, of our fellow board member, Cyril Skala. It's a summary of his life and work and the things that he's done and interests, and it's worth, uh, taking a look, uh, about Cyril Skala. Uh, there are a couple of items from Patch, uh, Patch has, has a reporter from Lincoln Wrestler that in his district, well, I guess it's most of the district, uh, most of us. He states that one in four tenants are paying most of their rent, or most of their income in rent. So I don't think that's a surprise, but still it's an interesting statistic. Uh, also in Patch, uh, there was a report that there are, there are, right now, if you wanted, if you have the desire, the means to want to move to Dumbo, there are currently sixteen units in all of Dumbo that's available. Not sixteen units in a specific development or building, sixteen units total in all of Dumbo are available for you to enjoy and purchase. And finally, this is something that I think more, more of interest, special interest to Bill Flannoy. Uh, the Regal Cinema on, on, uh, you know, on Court Street has been permanently closed. Which is something of a surprise. All right, next.
I'm sorry, Carlton, at the corner of State Street? The United Theater? Permanently closed?
Permanent.
Interesting.
It was closed a lot during the, uh, the height of the pandemic, but now Regal has decided that they are not, uh, continuing with the facility. The owner doesn't know, has no comments at this point as to what will come with it, right? But it's permanently, yeah, permanently closed. The theater is permanently, you know, they, they closed up, they're out, they've gone away. There's no longer, it's just sitting there empty right now. It's not a Regal anymore. It's not anything, except just, I guess, just the, um, the theaters that are in there inside the building.
Thank you, Carlton. I appreciate that update.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have coming up is the, under the other business is the, um, district needs and budgetary items. Uh, asking, you know, I think Karen, are you ready to take notes for that? Thank you, Karen. Karen Johnson will take the notes on this point, and if you want to do it Daughtry as well, that's fine. Uh, Karen will make sure to try to get those district needs list over to Caroline Church and Taya Mueller. Um, my first item, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'd like to see for district needs and for the budget is an expansion of inspectors for both the Department of Housing Preservation Code Enforcement and for the Department of Building Inspectors on all levels. Uh, the elevator inspectors, the boiler inspectors, uh, more inspectors are, I believe, are needed on all across the board, both at HPD and DOB. If there are any other items that, uh, committee members or board members wish to, uh, bring up, now is your chance.
Can I just pop in before we start the discussion for a bit? Um, before I do that, I want to introduce, um, new board member and potential member of this committee, Yvette Richardson. Uh, Ms. Richardson, uh, will probably be joining this committee officially at our next meeting. But on, on, on this particular topic, um, so what we want to do is present evidence for our requests. What I'm saying to my committees is this, and, and land use is, is not guilty of this one, but we tend to go for a lot of, um, a, a lot of items. But what we really want to do as a committee is figure out maybe five to seven capital items and get the data to back up that request. On the expense items, same thing. We, we don't just want to bulk it up, but we want to have solid references for our requests. So for instance, the chair has said, what we need are inspectors. So what we need to find out is how many inspectors are there? Are the inspectors divided by borough? That's, you know, so, so are there forty inspectors and are those forty inspectors, you know, for all of New York City? Or does Brooklyn get six of those inspectors? So that's the way we should be approaching discussing these needs. Um, and yes, Daughtry, I do agree with you, we're not going to do this for much longer, but that, that's, that's what I wanted to raise tonight, not, not necessarily the development of the ideas, but the approach that we're going to take or that we should be taking. Um, as, as we fill out this year's statement. Um, it would be really awesome if this is a process that we can complete by, um, June because it gives us time to host a public hearing in early September, if not late August, so that the board can vote and allow the staff and select committee members to write up the, the narratives. Because there's a lot of narrative. Um, and it, it takes time to write it. But if we have the data that we use in order to select the question, the, the, the needs, then it's also easier for us to write the data and it takes away a lot of the time pressure. So that's what I wanted to say in this section, not necessarily.
I can't give you, okay, I'll tell you right now, Caroline, I cannot give you any statistics on that. I have no friends at, at either department anymore. My years have passed. Uh, I can't, I can't tell you. All I can tell you is from my personal experience, this is what's needed. That's all I can give you.
We can find these things.
I'll, I'll swear to stack of bibles on that point, if I have to, but I can't tell you, I have no, I have no data to give you.
But we can find the data. The data is out there right now. That's one of the things about New York City, open data. We can, we can find the data. So that's okay.
Caroline, can I ask you a question? When do we get responses back for the, uh, statement of district needs for 2022?
No, I thought twenty-three, actually.
The responses, responses back for 2022.
We already got responses, fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, so it's twenty-three. Um, we wish, I, I thought we would have gotten them back by now. I haven't seen any emails regarding that. They usually tell us when it, when it's ready. They send us an email. However, the statement itself has been published, but they haven't given us the responses as yet.
Does providing more data actually get us anything that we want? I mean, I, I don't want to not do it, but I just feel like, do we ever get what we want?
Sometimes, sometimes, but, but anecdotal, just anecdotal request isn't going to get us funding.
I understand that. I'm just wondering, like, we go through this process all the time and we spend a lot of time spinning our wheels on it. And like, do we get anywhere? Oh, is that?
So Caroline, I want to throw up an item that the community board negotiated in two thousand and four with the, uh, rezoning of downtown Brooklyn. We had negotiated a parking lot under Duffield Park that was, in our minds, a place for all of these public, all of these agencies that parked their vehicles on the sidewalk. That underground parking lot was eliminated from the plans for the park, which leaves us no space for all of those cars. Now Borough Hall did a wonderful job a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the new mayor just got rid of all the cars. I don't know what happened to them, and I don't know that that would be able to be done with the other agencies that do the same thing. So with all this new construction, there seems to be an opportunity to create a similar circumstance under one of these buildings that would, could be used to house all of these agency employee cars that are currently parked on the sidewalk. How would we frame that?
Well, I just want to, yeah, I just wanted to point out that was Borough President Antonio Reyes that got rid of the cars by Borough Hall. But go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, um, that, that, that will take a little bit of doing because most of the development that's going up is not under the edges of the city. They're private developers and the district needs statement is, is, is really about what the city can provide through funding. But it's, 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 it's a big question for the time that we have left tonight, but I suggest that it's something we revisit. Um, and think about how, how, how is that an ask? We keep it in mind when we asking for this is that the situation from two thousand and four to now has changed. Agencies all have less cars. There's more for movement to reduce the number of cars on the streets. Um, so, you know, the, the original request from two thousand and four is probably, would, would, would have to get reframed, you know?
Which is why I'm putting it out there. We need to think about how to make that happen. It would also be helpful if we could understand more about the number of cars that are parked on sidewalks and how that whole permit process or how it happens without any enforcement, because it's all illegal. It's just not enforced.
Sure, I agree. Um, and one more thing before I keep quiet and let the members like wrap it up is that Mr. Do joined me virtually earlier this week on a workshop from NYU Furman Center. I don't know if anyone else was there, um, where they gave, um, a demonstration on how to use the core data, New York City core data. And this allows, um, people like us, the regular New York City citizen, any researcher, to have easy access to housing data. It can tell you how many subsidized apart, units you have, the type of subsidies that, um, the building has. It doesn't show any buildings, however, that are no longer on subsidies. Um, it's, it's pretty simple. I think once you play around in it for a couple of minutes, you'll, 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 you'll get it. Um, so I encourage everyone to take a look at it. I think it's also going to help us in our discussions about affordable housing. And it has a mapping feature. It shows you where the units are and all that really good stuff. So I just wanted to share that because these are questions that we always have.
Well, Caroline, I'm glad you raised it because I was going to raise it in the open comment section. But since you raised it, let me just add that during the presentation, I submitted several questions all related effectively to what has happened in downtown Brooklyn. It's an item that we talk about. We don't have a solution and it's getting worse. And we talked about it tonight in a tangential way, and that is the homeless problem. As much as we talk about it, it's getting worse. And we have helped to cause that here in downtown Brooklyn in two thousand and four with that upzoning, that we don't actually know what happened to all the folk that have been priced out of downtown Brooklyn. We don't know. So why can we get that information, Caroline? I asked that question in, in, in the forum and I didn't get an appropriate response. Caroline?
I, I, I'm thinking of a response. That's a little bit of a forensic question. Um, you know, downtown Brooklyn was rezoned in two thousand and four. A lot of people were gone by about two thousand and seven, two thousand and six. Um, we don't know where they are. Was there a list of people someplace? That, that's, that's a tough one to figure out.
And that's exactly my point. You said forensic. The fact of the matter is, all of this was done via city policy. So there should be a way of getting a sense of what happened and, and, and juxtapose what happened with the current homeless population and get a better handle on going forward. Because two thousand and four represented pretty much the beginning of the upzoning of the entire city. We have now the highest homeless population ever. And the subways are totally out of control. So those, and there are lots of families that are doubled up. We need to understand that. And in line with that, Mr. Gordon, I am suggesting that the committee consider inviting our two newly elected council members so that we can all be on the same page in understanding what the issues are and, and how we need to go about dealing with these issues. Every time we deal with affordable housing, I think we do, uh, a, 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 a good job on a one-on-one basis. This is now a huge problem and I don't see a huge solution. What do our elected officials feel about this problem? What is their approach? And can we work in tandem to solve this problem, to begin to solve this problem? And Caroline?
I have no, yeah, I would say I have no problem in having, uh, Lincoln and, uh, you know, alumni Lincoln now, uh, Lincoln Wrestler and, uh, Crystal Hudson. Uh, of course, I'll have to leave that up to Caroline Church as to trying to set up a, uh, when and it's the most appropriate time, so we don't want them hanging if we're caught up in a multi-phase hearing or something like that. But, uh, yes, I will, I, I'll say right now to the district manager, uh, if an invitation can be sent to Lincoln Wrestler and Crystal Hudson for, to attend a future meeting of the Landmark Land Use Committee, please do so.
Can I make a suggestion?
I ju, I should just add that Crystal Hudson has rejected two applications in the process, not in our district. During Bethurstivacent, but she has stopped those two hous, the housing developments on Atlantic Avenue.
Uh, yes, I think I heard about that one also, yes. So we.
Gordon, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, uh, if we're going to invite them, shouldn't we first give them a list of topics that we want to discuss? So they're prepared, so they're prepared when they come to the committee to discuss them?
Yes.
We leave it open-ended, that's not going to be beneficial to anyone. So the committee should actually come up with a list of topics we want to discuss, such as homelessness, such as the men's shelters, such as, um, all the issues that are currently affecting us in this district as far as, um, housing and land development. Okay, also affordable housing. Those are the three main topics I think we should be discussing in this, uh, committee.
So we can start with that.
Excellent suggestion.
Mr. Gordon, you have the three items that we talk about the most, and if anyone else has any other items that can be added. But let's get started with that.
All right, so I'll, I'm asked right now, I'll ask Caroline Church to send out invitations and she'll appropriately, you know, she'll try to slot them in to the most appropriate time next for the, for an upcoming meeting. All right. Oh, before we continue, uh, since Yvette Richardson
Oh, excuse me.
made, um, a
Sorry.
Member of.
Sorry, Mr. Mitty. Warren, Ms. Warren, sorry, I had my hand raised for about ten minutes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Um, I wanted to ask a question of Karen while, before we change the topic. Sorry to interrupt. Um, Karen, you asked for us to support, um, what we want with data, and I was hoping that you could take us through one of the items and ask, you know, what sort of supporting information we could give, because I would benefit very much from having an example.
Um, it's a little late, so my brain is slow, so I'll go back to Mr. Gordon's, um, suggestion or, or, or his request that we need more, we, we need more inspectors. So it's, how, how many, so we need to know how many inspectors are there? How are the inspectors divide? And, you know, what are the shifts, um, whether it's twenty-four hours or sixteen hours? How many are assigned to Brooklyn? Maybe they're not assigned to Brooklyn, maybe they're assigned citywide. So we, we want. we, we want them assigned to us, then it's useful if we also have, um, reasons why to back it up. For instance, God forbid, the fire in the Bronx. You know, well, there were lots of violations. Um, so, 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 you know, was it not being inspected? Like, why would those violations sit in so long? And, and so you can use, I, I hate using that anecdote, I shouldn't have mentioned that. Um, you know, you, 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 you can use something similar to that to bolster your request. That sort of stuff you're looking for. Does that make sense?
What I could do.
It does make sense, but.
I'm just saying, for my suggestion, yeah, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I would say with my suggestion, I can give Carol Anne the basics of how the department is structured. I don't think there's been any changes from the time that I've been in departments. Uh, I can give a basic as to how code enforcement works. I can give the basics of that. Numbers, I cannot give. I don't know how many people they have, I don't even know the, the names, I mean, other than looking up on, uh, the city's website, I don't know who the names of the people involved are anymore. Uh, I used to know them, but I can give a basic. Now, if I can, I can't support it with the support, with supporting data, but I can give a basic, that's what I could do.
Okay.
Yes, Brian.
I'm, I'm just curious, you know, to use the, the example of fire inspectors, like, where would I even go to determine this information? Like, I don't, I don't know how to find out, you know, the certain number of inspectors allocated to a certain area. Um, I just want to have some sense of like, where to possibly search for information and like, what information is useful and where we could potentially get it if we don't have it, um, so that, uh, we know where to go next to, to answer, to fulfill those requests.
Um, so, so there are a number of city documents. Um, the mayor's management report for one thing. Also, we can just ask the agencies, um, they're, they're sort of almost mandated to give us that information. And, you know, they, they used to be a thing when I just started working at the board, and the, the members who were here before me would remember that there used to be, um, district consultations. And they were able to meet with the agency directly and ask these questions, so that's another thing that we can work on. Because according to the city charter, if we request it, it was, it, it must happen. So if we want to come up with a list of, say, ten wonderful questions, twelve wonderful questions, we can request HPD to come in and answer those questions. So that's one way we can get that information. Secondly, I don't have a contact at, a live contact at HPD, but I can also ask the agency for some of, of that information, and thirdly, um, we can put together a list of um, city, city sources that can help people find some, some of that information. And one of those is going to be like the mayor's management report, there's scorecards and stuff like that.
Do we have, do we have a way? Can we look retrospectively at what the, the community board have submitted in past years versus the city's, uh, ability to satisfy those requests?
Um.
Yes, you can, they are all on the public drive.
And, and the, the, the documents are also on the city's website, city planning website.
Can you send that link out to the, the committee so we can know exactly where it is and, and do a little bit of research? And do you know how it's organized? Is it organized by specific requests and then how it's satisfied?
Um, you're talking about the budget priorities, yes, 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 that, that, yeah. It's, it's all on the board drive, I believe. Taya uploaded a bunch of them.
Okay.
Okay, look, it's nine PM, uh, I do want to introduce since, uh, is she still there? I think, oh, did we lose Ms. Richardson? I guess she had to go.
No, I'm, I'm actually still here.
You're still there, all right, thank you, okay, good. I did want to, okay, I'd like to introduce Ms. Rich, well, at least as a prospective member, I can give you a minute just to tell us about yourself and, uh, what you do, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, getting in everyone, um, thank you for me, you know, letting me be a part of this. I've been, uh, sitting in a bunch of different meetings, uh, over the past couple of months. Um, I have to unfortunately admit that I, I hadn't been active in the, in the community board before, and now I'm regretting it, because I'm getting so much information, and it's, it's just, you know, it's just a, a great resource. Um, I'm an engineer, um, I'm a licensed professional engineer. I own a firm that practices engineering and architecture. Um, SRW Engineering and Architecture, I'm a native Brooklynite, I live in Pratt Towers and Clinton Hill. And, um, you know, I'm just happy to meet all of you guys.
Thank you, we can certainly use, uh, engineering help, uh, we have the architect, we have the engineer, I think that's really going to really be a big help. Uh, finally, we, we have the, uh, let's say, open, you know, open, we have an open, uh, community forum, open business. Uh, do any other people from the community that wish to speak? Hearing none, I think we discussed open session, uh, I think, any other topics that we, that we wish to bring up?
Carlton, when are we going to discuss the AMI?
Bill, whenever you guys, when you and the working group think you're ready to present, just let me know, and I'll, uh, I'll put it in either under my report or, uh, one of the other slots, just give me the, uh, give me the heads up.
Can we do it for next, next, for the next committee meeting? Have it on the agenda, we're pretty much ready.
Bill, either it'll go, either it'll be formally on the agenda, or I will turn over my slot to you.
That, that, that item should also be added to the list for the council members to talk about.
I already noted it, AMI, affordable housing, one in the same.
Thank you. There are no further, uh, comments or questions, and we have the motion to, or at least a finish this meeting.
So moved.
Second, thank you, everybody, thank you for going through this stuff. It was a long, thank you, everybody, for coming, and, uh, see you again.